Good evening, everyone. Are we ready? Good evening. Before we get started tonight, if everybody, I'd like to... Everyone, if I could have your attention. Before we get started tonight, I'd like to welcome Remit Brahmit. Please give us an invocation before we start our meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray together. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for this evening and we thank you for this season as we celebrate Thanksgiving at light and love in so many different ways. And we pray that in our city generosity will eclipse greed and joy will eclipse sorrow and sadness. We pray especially that you would be close to those for whom the holidays are hard and lonely, that they would feel comfortable, comforted, and surrounded by light and love. We thank you tonight for all those employees who have been faithful and hard at work in the City of Milton in the last ten years, and we pray for a special blessing for them and their families on this joyous occasion and empowerment for ten more years in this city. We ask for your continued grace and favor of our neighborhoods, our businesses, our schools, our farms, and everybody that lives here, and all those who serve our city. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. I want to welcome everyone here tonight, appreciate you being here. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, December 4th, 2017, to order. Suti, if you please, please call roll and make any general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the December 4th, 2017, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to read a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be ordered that the speaker cards are issued by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual has filed a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Coons.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick is running late. Councilmember Bill Lusk is absent for the record. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, and again, welcome here. We, for those of you that have not been in our new city hall, your new city hall, I just want to welcome you here tonight, so we're proud of it. Suti, if we could please call the approval of the agenda.
Our next item on the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Two-Nine-Nine.
I'd like to recommend moving item number seventeen dash three oh seven, Resolution of Appointing the Judge, after the approval of the agenda. If the council's okay with that. Is there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
I make the motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Second. Do you have a motion, Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Longoria? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Suti, if you'll please call the first item.
This item is consideration of a resolution appointing the Chief Judge of the Municipal Court for the City of Milton, Georgia pursuant to Article Five of the City Charter. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Three Zero Seven, Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, it's every four years concurrent with my term, it's incumbent on me to appoint our Chief Judge for the City of Milton. I would like to reappoint Chief Judge Brian Hansford. Steve, if you could say a few words on behalf of the staff or the court system as far as we've discussed that, but my recommendation is to reappoint Chief Judge Hansford, but if you have any feedback from the court system or the staff on that?
Absolutely. I get to speak from two perspectives, from when I was police chief and now as city manager, and we enjoy a very good relationship with the judge. He clearly keeps the best interests of the City of Milton in mind. He's very fair and open when approaching his duties, and he's an absolute pleasure to work with. We've talked about some very unique opportunities in the future regarding some really cutting-edge strategies for reducing both victimization and also further penetrating the criminal justice system. So there's a lot of opportunities where we look forward potentially to be working with him in the future.
Okay. Well, again, it would be my honor to reappoint Chief Judge Hansford, so with that, that would be my appointment, and I would need the council to confirm that, so I would open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number Seventeen Dash Three Oh Seven.
Okay, do you have a motion for approval from Councilmember Thurman, with a second from Councilmember Longoria? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. So if is Judge Hansford here? He would step forward and we'll swear at him. I'll swear in a minute. Do you repeat, raise your right hand, repeat after me.
Yes.
Aye, Brian Hansford.
Aye, Brian Hansford.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well and truly conduct myself.
That I will well and truly conduct myself.
As Chief Judge of the Municipal Court.
As Chief Judge of the Municipal Court.
For the City of Milton.
For the City of Milton.
For the in-suing term.
For the in-suing term.
And that I will faithfully enforce.
And that I will faithfully enforce.
Charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the City of Milton.
Of the City of Milton.
The best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
And that I am not the holder.
And that I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Of any unaccounted public money.
Due to the state or any political subdivision.
Due to the state or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And in all my actions as Chief Judge.
And in all my actions as Chief Judge.
Of the Municipal Court of the City of Milton.
Of the Municipal Court of the City of Milton.
Act as I believe in the best interest.
Act as I believe in the best interest.
Of the City of Milton.
Of the City of Milton.
So help we God.
So help we God.
Shift about a step over this way. Okay, shift a half step this way. Background, here we go, all right.
What time did it, do you know what time it was?
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Check those.
Thank you.
Super, got it, thank you.
I know it's done.
I'll have to share a real quick story. When the city was first, when we first became a city and I was newly elected mayor, and I had to find a book that told you, as a new mayor, how do you set up a court system and hire a judge? I'm joking on that, but when we had to interview for judges, again, I didn't have any experience in that, and we had a committee and some qualified staff members, but we interviewed about ten or twelve judges. And by the time Judge Hansford came along the interview process, I had kind of gotten my confidence up a little bit, so I started asking some questions and trying to make myself, you know, feel a little important in the interview process. And anyway, so we ended up hiring him as an associate judge, one of our judges. So, gosh, a year or two later, we ran into each other in the hall and we were talking and said, hey, how's it going and all? And I said, you know, I got to share with you. I said, when we were interviewing you, you know, a couple of your answers, I thought, those were kind of silly answers. And he looks at me and goes, well, I got to tell you, a couple of those questions you were asking seemed like really silly questions, too. But anyways, thank you Judge Hansford for all your work here at the city. Okay, Suti, do we have any general public comment?
Yes, sir, we have one.
Okay, next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during tonight's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from the council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to our city clerk. Please remember this is not a time to engage the mayor or city council in conversation. When your name's called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes. Okay, Suti, if you please, call the first person.
That would be Ms. Rose Prestiani.
Thank you very much. My name is Rose Prestiani. I live at 105 Providence Oaks Point here in Milton, Georgia, and thank you for this opportunity to talk with you today. I'll just take a couple of minutes of your time. I've given this item a lot of thought, and so I'd like to share my comment on it. It's my understanding that in early 2005, the boundaries of the Milton Election District One were expanded. You may have had other discussion about this, but this change in the boundary seems to have been accomplished without the knowledge or perhaps consent of the full city council and I think most of the citizens, and that just doesn't seem proper. So as a result, I respectfully request that the Milton City Council correct this change and restore Milton's Election District One to its original boundaries. Thank you very much.
More public comments, Suti, was that?
General.
Okay, if we could move on to the consent agenda, if you would, please call that item.
First item is approval of the November twentieth, 2017, regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Three Hundred. Next is approval of the financial statements and investment report for the period ending October 2017. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Three Oh One. Our third consent agenda item is approval of an enterprise license agreement with Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc., Esri, for geographic information systems software. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Three Zero Two. Our fourth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a resolution to provide cancer and long-term disability coverage to certified firefighting personnel through the Georgia Interlocal Risk Management Agency, GMA, in compliance with House Bill 146. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Three Zero Three.
Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as read.
Second. Do I have a motion, Councilmember Coons, second from Councilmember Longoria? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, Suti, if you please, call the next item.
Next item is recognition and presentation of the City of Milton Ten-Year Anniversary Pens.
Okay, and this is quite an honor. A lot of times I tell people what the accomplishments of our city have been over the last eleven years, and, you know, number, one of the major things is the community and our citizens that have given so much and care and get involved, but the other reason why we're such a great city is because of our dedicated and caring staff members and folks that work with us every day and make things happen, and I've just continually been impressed with just the commitment and the care that these folks have given us and all of our citizens. So, again, tonight, this is a special thing in recognition. We're giving service pens to those staff members who've been with the city for ten and five years and also recognizing our employees that have retired. First, the tenured recipients in recognition of our retirees. As the city manager calls your name, please come forward to the podium, and at the end we will have, and just stand there, and at the end we'll have a group photo opportunity. So we'll start with the tenure.
Our first recipient will be Mark Arall. Clay Barnett. Charles Barstow. Jason Baswell. Shane Black. Tyson Blake. John Borsey. Jason Cantrell. Jeanette Sida. John Cunningham. John Dances. Danny Elliott. Matt Falstrom. Tim Farnell. Johnny Gomez. Brian Hansford. James Hickerson. Roth Hutchison. Stacy Ingless. Ryan James. Angie Kapagiampong. Easy for you to say. Sarah Leaders. I'm sorry, Angie. Aunt Marietta. Augie Masioli. Sean McCarty. Honor Moats. Tyler Nicholson. Don Patterson. Josh Payne. Angela Rambo. Chris Say. Fran Scholenthal. Mark Slime in the Third. Danny Snyder. Mark Stevens. Chad Sweeting. Chad Taylor. Kim Traywick. Russ Womack. Scott Wright. And retirees, Bill Bourne. Greg Foster. Bill Garrett. John Huey. Jeff Humphrey. Mike Melson. Thomas Mickens. And Jimmy Sanders.
We're going to do a little bit, counsel, if you will, stand, if you'll stand behind and push your mic down for me. Paula, migrate to the back if you don't mind. That is not to insult those of us who have a... I'm going to move you in just a second. If you would, instead of standing shoulder to shoulder, each of you on your row turn a little bit sideways. If you're on a row behind someone, I want you to position yourself between shoulders. Okay? Matt, if you will swat with it next to you, yes. From Angela to come back and stand in between shoulders, right here. I'm probably going to do it right, okay. Just a little bit this way, okay? Just this way a little bit, stop, okay? It's probably...
I got to get a wide angle.
Okay. Airborne is wide as I can get. One more time, this is it, I promise. I'm sure, I'm going out on a risk. All right, we're all looking here. One, one, two, three, smile. It's deep. Hold on. There we go. Okay, self timer, but we're going one, two, three. All right, one more. One, two, three. Excellent, thank you.
Now, I just want to, again, thank all of these folks that have been here for ten years, part of our team. Thank you very much, so.
For the best part of our, we'll do the five-year pins, so would your name be called? If you please step forward here.
You came a month before me, right? Or a month after?
For the five-year pins, our first recipient is Herman Bennett. Khalil Bouzian. Mark Brown. Richard Bushman. Jim Craig. Scott Harrell. Bernadette Harville. Matt Coons. Wendy Lee. David Little. Dawn Serf. And Susan Wilmouth.
Counsel, you can come down for this, if you don't mind. If you will each turn sideways just a little bit in towards Jim this way. There we go, just a little bit.
Um, I mean, the mayor is...
A step this way?
Jump in.
Perfect. Let me get that shot a little quickly. Okay, we're going here, one, two, three. Down. One, two, three. Let's do one more. One, two, three. Let's do one more. One, two, three. Confirm. We're good, thank you.
Again, I want to congratulate everybody and thank everybody that just received a pin. We're going to take a couple of minutes. We've got not only the employees that received a pin, but families that are here, and we've got a cake to celebrate, so we're going to take about a five-minute break to let everybody enjoy a piece of cake, so.
Can't decide if I'm glad that's before me or after me. I know, I'm trying to decide whether I'm happy or sad about it.
I know, I shouldn't want to hang out for it either.
Did I tell you I got a call from the daycare today and my baby has two?
But she goes red and she's... I don't know either, so I felt like that was...
I thought of it for like a second. And then at daycare, they called me and they're like, did you see him? I was like, no.
But I treated, doctor instructed her to go to the school, so on her ears there, she would nod. So, I don't know. You don't have competition from every parent that you're with, that a lot of them see you, they try. You have to do a lot better than that. It's a two-day. Yeah. At the same time, yeah.
Apparently they're in the bottom front.
That's, that's your pick, that's mine.
Yeah.
Did you get this? Did you get this freaking answer?
On the phone, when I asked for a sit, yeah. Yeah, why is it so plain?
I, it came out of concern.
Yeah.
What's up, she's at seven thirty. She's getting a bath right now and then going to the theater.
Yeah.
Oh, it's only like twenty minutes, bits of seven, I... And I can always call and be like, yes, ma'am.
I didn't have another one for that one.
I think, yeah, I think you'll be able to see him.
I think so.
Thank you.
Sounds like there could be, so.
You can try to catch him.
Call for him.
Let me add, too, this cake is for everybody, so feel free to grab a piece if you'd like. Let me add too, this cake is for everybody, so feel free to grab a piece if you'd like. Could I have everybody's attention?
You're sweet enough. Yeah. You're a sweet mom now.
We on? Have everybody's attention? We'll get back to our meeting. If everybody can take a seat. Thank you guys for allowing us to have a quick break there. We'll move on to our first presentation. If you'll please sound the first presentation item.
Ms. Consideration of RZ 1711, text amendment to Article 20, Deerfield Form-Based Code, Table 10, Specific Function...
If we can turn up the volume there? If you'd please.
Can you hear me now? Is that better? There's Carter.
Test, test.
Test, one, two, three, test.
David, could you turn, turn it up a little bit?
Is that better? Can you hear me? Okay. Consideration of RZ 1711, text amendment to Article 20, Deerfield Form-Based Code, Table 10, Specific Function and Use Regarding the T6 Transsect Zone, Agenda Item Number 17304.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second on the first presentation item?
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 17-304.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. We have no items under public hearing, a zoned agenda or unfinished business, so we'll move on to our new business. Suti, if you'll please call that item, first item.
Consideration of a Resolution of the City of Milton, authorizing a pre-application for a Recreation Trails Program Grant with the Department of Natural Resources, Agenda Item Number 17305. Mr. Jim Craig.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What you have before you is a resolution seeking the permission for us as staff to submit a pre-application grant to the Department of Natural Resources. We are applying for a grant of $200,000, which would be applied to a trails project at Providence Park. It's a 20% match, so it's a total of $250,000, of which 50,000 would be on behalf of the city. The funding is available presently in the budget and the capital improvement plan for overall park's improvement. And we are seeking your approval. With your approval, we intend to submit this application by December 31st. It is a two-year application cycle. If we do not apply at this time, we would not be able to apply for another two years. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions for Jim on this? Joe?
So, Jim, I, you know, we have these opportunities for grants on a regular basis. It sounds like this one is a nice one in that it's an 80/20. Is that what she said, 80/20 or 75?
It's 80/20, $250,000, of which 50,000...
What kind of strings come along with the DNR money, if any?
The biggest string is that once that money is applied to be built at the trail, the trail must stay there in perpetuity.
Okay. Which shouldn't necessarily be a challenge for us, because that's our intention anyway.
That is the plan, yes. There's other requirements they're looking for, for buying, you know, buying state of Georgia, you know, products and things like that for construction, all of which we believe we can easily accommodate the requirements.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anybody else have a question? Okay. I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 17-305.
I have a motion by Councilmember Coons for approval. The second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The passage is unanimous.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. All right, Suti, if you'll please sound the next item.
Next item is consideration of the following subdivision, Platte Park at Bethany Land Lot 832, Bethany Bend Road, final platte, 27 lots, 887 total acres, 3.04 lot per acre, Agenda Item Number 17306, Ms. Melissa Brandon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, the plot we're discussing tonight is located at Bethany Bend and Cogburn Road. Just to orient you, it's right across the street from Cambridge High School. So, the site area for this project is 8.87 acres. It's gonna be 27 detached lots, and it includes 4.2 acres of open space that is a pond and some public open space. The entrance is off Bethany Bend. It's right here. The road is Evelyn Drive. It's to be private. One feature of the development is this 130-foot wide open space. There's also a 10-foot wide sidewalk that runs along Cogburn and all the way down Bethany Bend. And there is a mail kiosk here with on-street parking. The entire project is curb and gutter, so it's got storm structures that run to the pond. And this also has some nice plantings that will help screen out the pond. Any questions?
Are there any questions, Bill?
Melissa, welcome back.
Hi, thanks.
When was this initially approved for rezoning?
For the rezoning?
Yes.
Robin, do you know when that was?
I believe it was 2013.
2013. And this was what, the third proposal that came forth on that property, am I...
Uh, yes, uh-huh. Yes. So, there was a church and then...
Mormon church, right?
I don't remember the specific one. And then the second one was the current developer asked for assisted living facility, withdrew it, and then came in for this development that's been built.
And how did this development come to be with this type of zoning?
So, there's a little bit of history behind it. Basically, we had not started yet on the Highway 9 North Visioning Plan, but the developer was getting ready to come in for rezoning. And so, we had hired a mediator to help assist with the community that was in the area. And basically, it was a few months' process. They came up with the agreement of what they wanted to see to be developed there. And it was agreed upon that the developer would come in for rezoning to the NUP from the AG1 based on those criteria that the community had come up with at the time.
And the community consisted of whom?
There were various stakeholders, but typically the subdivision to the north, I can't remember the name of it.
Was it Oakstone?
Oakstone. The majority of people were from there, as well as from property owners up and down Bethany Bend, so, yes.
Including property owners on Highway 9, like the five-acre subdivision?
Well, the five-acre subdivision was done separately, so they weren't really involved in the nuts and bolts of this development. They had their own discussions and agreement for the five-acre portion, which the five-acre portion went ahead and was included in the Highway 9 North Visioning and the LCI that was, I believe it was the LCI or a plan that was adopted by council. So, this was set apart and separate from that process. And the developer came in with the rezoning.
Okay, with the consensus of the adjoining neighborhoods up and down Bethany and Cogburn?
Right, correct. I mean, it was based on, they came to an agreement. And I do believe actually when it came to the rezoning, I think the developer went down one or two units from the original number of units that were gonna be proposed.
Yeah, now, we're talking about the property just the north of Cambridge High School, right across the road. Is that correct?
Right, it's, there's the northeast corner of Bethany Bend and Cogburn, yes.
Okay. So, the rezoning came in front of council for approval, is that correct?
That is correct.
This density that's shown on this plan that we're looking at right now?
Right, I do believe, I think he lost a unit or so from the original submittal, but it was approved by council with this number of units.
And do you recall the vote on council that approved that rezoning?
I do not. I'd have to go and pull the case. I don't remember it off the top of my...
Was it five to two? Does that sound familiar?
I don't know, Mr. Lusk.
She doesn't recall.
I can barely remember my kids' names, so.
Well, I recall.
Okay.
Because you and I talked about it about three months ago.
Okay.
It was approved five to two by this council here.
Okay.
So, it was not approved just by one person?
McDonald, who is the developer currently? Because I know at one time, one of my clients had an interest in this, and I just want to make sure that they don't, are not still involved.
So, the current owner, developer, is present here. It is Curtis Hicks.
Okay.
Now, I don't know if he is, have transferred the ownership yet, but he is here if there's any questions for him.
I know we had had a number of issues with gradation and runoff and stuff. Have we resolved all those issues with this current platte?
So, we have, they have updated the storm line that runs along the north end of the property to be out of an easement area. So, it runs straight to the detention pond, if that's the drainage issue you're referring to.
Any other questions?
I would just like to ask Mr. Hicks if any of the Flints are involved in the project, because if so, I need to recuse myself. So, I just want to make sure that I'm recusing myself if I need to. And I'm sorry, I just, I'm gonna be safe and sorry.
I'm Curtis Hicks. Which individuals you...
Any of the Flints, Brian, Michael, or David?
Yes, Brian is a partner of mine.
Then I will recuse myself.
Okay.
And, Ms. Chase, if you don't mind, just state your name and address.
Curtis Hicks, 8647 Eller Drive, Alpharetta, Georgia, 30022.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, for the record, Councilmember Thurman is gonna recuse herself. Okay? Any other questions? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 17-307. Sorry. Six.
Second.
17306. Apologies.
A motion from Councilmember Longoria, second from Councilmember Coons. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
And then Councilmember Thurman is recused. All right.
Thank you.
Next item we move, so, Suti, we'll move on to our final new business item. Will you please sound the item?
Mr. Mayor, just for a point of order, would you call out the vote count on that one, just for...
I will, I will. And to confirm, Suti, that we had, we had five yays. Councilmember Hewitt was a nay, and Councilmember Thurman abstained.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
This item is consideration of a land acquisition agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia, and Triumph Golf LLC, related to the purchase of the Milton Country Club Tax Parcels, 2244-000-5280716, 16.80 acres, 2244-1006-000798, 31.34 acres, 2245-7006-010140, 11.60 acres, 2245-6005290240, 16.50 acres, 2244-2006-720328, 56 acres, 2244-1006-250740, 4.85 acres, for $5 million. Agent, Agenda Item Number 17308. Mr. Steve Krokoff.
And if I could step in for a second? We had, I'm assuming we have some public comment on that?
We have 13 individuals that would like to speak and five cards to be read into the record.
Okay. What I'd like to do, if the council's okay, just in respect for those folks that would like to speak, is I'd like to allow our staff to make the presentation first and then give you time to speak. That way, that may either answer some questions or may prompt you to ask a different question in your comment, if that's okay. Is council okay with that? Okay. I think that might make more sense. That way, you may have a different question or you may get an answer to your question or concern. All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What you have before you today is the consideration for the purchase of the property that we will call the Milton Country Club. As you are aware, our Green Space Advisory Committee became aware of this, the possibility to purchase this just a couple of weeks ago. And we have been moving very quickly since. This, of course, was an opportunity to acquire a very unique piece of land in the smack dab in the middle of the center of Milton. And obviously, we have moved very quickly to be able to bring this before you today.
Steve, can I break in and I apologize for one second? And just ask our city attorney to just give a brief explanation of when a municipality, the process of purchasing a piece of property, or at least the interest of purchasing a piece of property as far as the quickness or the, you know, executive session and negotiations.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yeah, with respect to governments, any government, both cities and counties, Georgia law anticipates... both cities and counties, Georgia law anticipates that the acquisition of land is an appropriate topic to be discussed in what is called executive or closed session. The public policy behind that, of course, is that the seller will then not know all of the dynamics behind how much the buyer may want to pay for the property, how desirable the piece of property is, and a lot of other compelling public policy interests that allow us to go into executive session to discuss it. And so that is no different with respect to the city of Milton. So yes, this has been discussed in an executive session as the law tolerates, and there are, you know, very good reasons to do that.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize, Steve, and that was, just so that when some folks, this opportunity came before us and was discussed, and now it's being brought up public, but it, you know, in a sense that people think it happened quick, but that's basically the way it needs to happen. So go ahead, Steve.
So what we'll be going over this evening, and it seems like a lot, but it, it'll go rather quickly. We are going to revisit the green space bond referendum. We'll discuss the different types of land that are authorized. We'll go over the planning commission factors and some of their recommendations. We'll outline the Green Space Advisory Committee purchasing criteria, which they were able to put together with the Georgia Conservancy. We'll look at the Milton Country Club quickly through photos. We'll examine some of the property and purchase details. We'll talk about the trail opportunities and how that connects with our overall trail plan. And we'll cover some future possibilities and considerations. So to start with the green space bond referendum, this is the language from the 2016 referendum. This was the legally binding language that authorized the $25 million in bond funds. I'll give, give a moment if you want to take a read on that or if the audience wants to take a read on that.
Can everybody see the screen?
So what you have before, before you now, and we'll, I'll talk to Shannon. We could get this, this presentation posted. You're in the audience. There you are. We can get this posted somewhere so, so people will have access to the presentation, yes?
Yes, we'll put that on the Green Space Bond page where everything is out.
Excellent, thank you. So if you miss anything, it'll, it'll be available online. So this was one of the original mailers that went out, and it talks about the types of land authorized by the bond. The three types were trails and parks, green space, and those to maintain our rural character. In addition to the bond language, the city enlisted the assistance of the Milton Planning Commission to create factors for purchasing green space land. And, I'm pointing in the wrong direction. There we go. And these were some of the factors that the, the Planning Commission came up with. They were looking for willing seller and landowners. That was part of the language about no condemnation. Preservation of trees, acquisition of, of land that is contiguous and adjacent to other green space, buildable land. Two, and they also wanted us to meet two or more of the three criteria of trails and parks, green space, and rural character. And again, as I said earlier, these were put together with the, through the Planning Commission, but with the Green Space Advisory Committee and in conjunction with the Georgia Conservancy. So these are the, the MGAC and Georgia Conservancy purchase criteria. One of the, up in the upper left, you'll see the bond program goals, which are to acquire conservation land and interest in conservation land for the purposes of providing recreational trails, protecting natural areas and wildlife habitat, preserving agricultural land, protecting water quality of rivers and streams, and providing parks and park improvements. The public and protected assets in the upper right, this, these factors involve any potential properties adjacent to or contiguous to existing city assets such as parks and trails, as well as other public assets such as schools and libraries. Hydrology in the lower left, this takes into account wetlands, ponds, streams, and adjacent properties. And in the lower right, agricultural and equestrian properties, and this is potential equestrian facilities or agricultural land. These were the pictures. These are some pictures from various areas throughout the, throughout the property. We only threw four in here. It really doesn't do the property justice. I'm sure as everybody in here would attest to it, it is a beautiful piece of, piece of property. So the big question today, of course, is why the Milton Country Club? Why are we so focused on, or why are we focused on this piece of land? One of the unique, the unique aspects of this is that it is a large land acquisition, 137.09 acres, to, to be exact, that would be preserved. It's a very unique opportunity for the city to be able to conserve a large piece of property such as this. Another interesting factor is that it already exists, the, the partial trail infrastructure already exists as a result of the car paths that have been, that have been installed for, for the golfers. There is significant buildable land to be saved, which checks off some of our criteria. It is in a prime location to augment our trail and, our trail plan and our equestrian plan. And another key factor is it runs along approximately 1.6 miles of Chicken Creek. Some additional considerations were, was the competitive cost per acre, the environmental benefits, which included enhanced water quality with that kind of access to Chicken Creek, access to that buffer and stream preservation. Obviously, one other issue was concerning the uncertainty of the golf's, the golf course's future, the prevention of possible new 50-plus home development, the connectivity to the Central Milton Trail, strategic alignment with the proposed Parks Master Plan, and the preservation and creation of wildlife habitat. So when we talk about evaluating the green space bond criteria that we talked about just a little while ago, and some of the things that are getting checked off, we check off four of the five. We have the willing seller and landowner. We have the preservation of trees. In fact, we, we very likely will be able to add canopy in, on that land. It's, it's, it does check off the mainly buildable, and it does meet two or more of the three criteria. I would argue that it actually checks off five of the five. Only, I don't think when they were doing this language, they quite anticipated 140-acre parcel as part of, this in, in and of itself becomes a feature as opposed to connecting to another feature. This is our GIS of the parcel in question. The numbers that are included on here, the one through six, are, are not indicative of anything. They're just, they're just for reference. But it does show the acreage of the various parcels. These add up to 137.09. This next parcel includes the floodplain details. So where you see the red and the lighter pink, that is the overlay of the current floodplain. Approximately 45% of the acreage is located within the floodplain. And Carter, if I could, if I could turn it over to you a little bit, could you talk a little bit about what the floodplain means in regards to what can and cannot be done?
Certainly. So we've got various regulatory components when we start looking at the streams. So all the way down to the 25-foot state mandated stream buffer. We then put on a 50-foot undisturbed buffer for this local stream buffer regulations, as well as a 75-foot impervious setback. And, and those undisturbed buffers are really the only things that absolutely prevent development within those areas absent of variance from either the state or the local Board of Zoning Appeals. So in addition to that, when we get into the floodplain, we've actually got two different levels of floodplain here in the city of Milton. So you've got your base flood elevation that's established by FEMA. In this particular case, it's a Zone A or an undetermined flood elevations in that particular area. But you've also got what we refer to as a future floodplain. And our regulations speak to both. Regulation to the FEMA or the hun, or the future floodplain, whichever provides the greatest protection for the stream. And so, in those particular cases, our future floodplain is a little bit more strict than the model ordinances and other ordinances, in that while it doesn't allow you to put the primary structure on, within the future floodplain, it does allow you to develop within that floodplain. And so whether it's secondary structures or roads or infrastructure, provided you can meet some additional design criteria to ensure that you're not impacting flood elevations, it does allow you to develop within those areas. So I think that's about it from the floodplain regulations. Thanks, Carter.
Steve, can I ask a question on that?
Certainly.
So, so we came up with a number of 50 homes through an eye test. We obviously know LDP was done through this to determine the exact number of what can be done, but, but that's where we got the idea of including the floodplain element? Or we just think it would be 50 is the minimum? It could be more?
I think the next slide will probably give you an idea about the site plan that was presented that indicated the number of homes.
So I'm, I'm with you then. That makes sense. Okay.
You mentioned some type of development is allowed in, in that floodplain. Could you elaborate on that? What type of development would be allowed?
So from our regulations, what it mainly prohibits is the development of the primary structure on the property. And that is particular to ours. So most ordinances will allow the primary structure within the floodplain, given some particular restrictions. So the finished floor needs to be elevated. It needs to be protected from flood flows. It, it needs to be setback outside of our undisturbed buffers, but the development in, inside the floodplain is permitted, given some restrictions. So you can't fill the floodplain to the extent that you impact somebody else's property. But through engineering analysis, if you can demonstrate that what you're proposing to do within that floodplain doesn't impact adjoining properties, it would be permitted.
Well, according to engineering practices, if you're going to remove a certain volume in a floodplain by filling or creating a structure in there, you have to compensate somewhere within that floodplain to create an equal volume that you're displacing. Is that correct?
That is an option that's available under ordinance. Yes, sir.
Okay.
So what you have before you here is a proposed site plan. Keep in mind, it's only, it's purely concept. No soils have been done, nothing along those lines, but it's just one possible buildout of the, of that site. You'll notice in the plan that there, it does not include any building whatsoever in, within the floodplain. And this is a 51 site, propose, site plan. This does include roadways. The roadway goes down along the back of the, I believe, the back of the Freemanville residences and comes in off of Denzmore. I went over this with Community Development and Carter to see if this, if this would be a viable buildout of that property. And there's no reason to believe that with the, the configurations may be off a little bit. There are some areas that may be too thin to include all the setbacks necessary, but if they were to elongate some properties and reconfigure this, there's no reason to believe that something close couldn't be achieved in this, on this site. Next, I'm going to roll into trail assets and trail connectivity. I'm going to turn this over to Carter again, but just one thing that, that I just want to open up with, something, something that's not going to be a surprise to you. You know, in all, in, in just about all of the surveys we do, trails and trail-like amenities are always number one. We, as you know, we recently did a statistically valid survey of, of members of the city of Milton. And while we're still working through the, the details of this, and it hasn't been made public yet, in, out of the respondents that were surveyed, by far, actually, 85% when, with the question asked, what types of facilities have they used during the past year, 85% responded positive, in the affirmative to walking, hiking, and bike trails, with the next highest one was 41% with parked pavilions and shelters. So obviously, you can see there's a, for as far as use is concerned, it's the hiking trails and those kinds, and those different amenities that attract, currently attract our residents. And in another question, facility respondents, households, what they have a need for, the number one answer again was walking, hiking, and biking trails, a 77%, followed by large community parks at 56%. So it is, it is something we are seeing coming back once again, which I know is no surprise to any of you, but we're still seeing it as recent as the results that just came back in. With that, Carter, would you mind addressing the, the trails, assets, and trail connectivity?
Sure, if you want to step, there we go. So if you'll remember back in the beginning of November, we were directed to move forward with an update to our trails plan. That Milton blueprint provided for three, what were referred to as golden opportunities. So we had a crabapple deerfield area and then a Central Milton opportunity. In that Central Milton opportunity, really was highlighted by the gravel roads and Providence Park, potential assets that we were aware of at the time, some use of the future school property on Wood and Freemanville Road. If we go to the next slide. One back place, yes, there you go. And so that Central Milton Trail looked at some connectivity through that high school, not high school site, but the school site on Freemanville and Wood Road, and tried to connect those back to Providence Park. And at the time, we were looking at potential, the dashed arrows there represent some potential greenway-type connections that may move to the north and to the east to finalize that trail. And if you'll go to the next slide. But we really didn't know that this was a potential asset at that time. And so when this came on board, the proximity to the Central Milton Trail really made it an attractive option to provide some additional trail mileage in an environment that you wouldn't normally get on a lot of our trails. So a lot of our side path trails, as we've discussed, are going to put you in close proximity to traffic and are not going to necessarily give you the same environment that a greenway-type trail would be, and trails that are, may be available to us on the school property. And so the proximity to this, to the school property presents a golden opportunity to try and make some connection between those two, which would then connect to the gravel roads, which then connects to Providence Park, and really starts to develop kind of that central core of the trails program that we've been looking for.
So to get into some of the passive possibilities, some of the things that we, we have discussed with, with our conservation manager involved, pollinator fields, I'm going to have a hard time getting much deeper into it than that, and bluebird trails, which involves bluebird boxes and brings the birds in. The picture on the left is not our facility. That is, that's a stock photo. The one is, the one, the one on the right is. Some other potential passive, passive possibilities include getting equestrian, and as we already discussed, the bikes, bicyclists and pedestrians. Regarding some of the preliminary purchase details, as you are aware, the property, the, contract before you is for $5 million for 137.09 acres, which includes, of course, the land, but also the event facility, the pool, clubhouse, and four tennis courts. And obviously, what the, what the use could be for those will be later determined. And equipment, which is also going to be determined. As you'll see in the contract, we have, I believe, two weeks to be able to work with the seller, to be able to come up with an acceptable agreement on what equipment will stay and what equipment will go. So as far as funding opportunities, you, you're well aware of, of course, of the opportunity through our green space bond, but in addition to that, we have 3.37 million in trails through T-Sploß, through our city conservation funds, we have another 804,000. Through our city parks and recreation and trail expansion, which comes through the park impact fees, we have another 4.8 million. Revenues from cell tower leases, we bring in roughly 77 for a year. And apparently, we didn't pay the lights, though. And as you know, the, the 25 million in the bond. Some future considerations include the facilities. Obviously, we'd have to determine what could possibly be done with that, what the community would like to see done with that. But some possible uses, it could be an adult, an active adult center, things along those lines. But there's all kinds of opportunities in there. Obviously, we haven't done a structural on the building yet, but just a, a single pass through. It appears to be somewhat versatile. From a maintenance standpoint, the long-term... From a maintenance standpoint, the long-term upkeep is obviously going to be dependent upon what we ultimately determine we're going to do with it. In the meantime, some questions, I've actually spoken to a gentleman who I believe is in the audience today as well. We're going to have to determine what it's going to cost in upkeep, just in keeping it manicured in the time till we determine whether or not we're going to plant wildflowers, like you saw in the last picture, and things along those lines, so it doesn't become some, you know, an overgrown mess back there. So, we have to determine what kind of cost that would be, and we're in the process of looking at that. We've seen some preliminary numbers. Carter's spoken to some people in the business. There are some people that are there already that are contracted, that are doing it. Obviously, we don't have to manicure it, so you can putt, but we do have to keep it so it's, it remains a nice view. And some potential revenue opportunities, there may be a potential for the sale of sod. We're exploring that right now to see whether or not that that is a viable opportunity. Some of the things that actually came through, some of the questions that came in since Friday, potential sale of land that might be adjacent to some of the current property owners for, with conservation easements on it, of course, so they could never be buildable, obviously something for you to consider, and potential sale of stream mitigation credits. That goes, and if we don't do anything with the facility, obviously, the facility itself, depending on what your wishes are, could also generate a revenue stream.
Question.
Yes, sir.
On the negative side of the ledger, then, what would we lose in tax revenue?
What would we lose in tax revenue from that facility if the city took it over?
We didn't pull those numbers to determine what the loss would be, but we could certainly get you those numbers.
Thank you.
So, as far as the recommendation to council, after consultation with the Green Space Advisory Committee and the work that we did as staff, we do recommend the purchase of the Milton Country Club as part of the city's mission in fulfilling its green space bond initiative.
Okay. What I'd like to do now, it's okay with the councils, I believe, Sudi, we had about 13?
13, yes.
14?
13.
13 public comments, folks that would like to speak on a public comment. If we could have them speak on their public comment, and then we'll open back up to questions and whatnot with staff, the council. That's okay. Council, all right with that? Okay, Sudi, if you'd please call the speakers.
Our first speaker is Rose Prestiani.
And just to remind everybody speaking, if you'd just state your name and address for the record at the beginning.
First of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to provide some input to this, what I think will be a lively discussion. I'd like to thank the city council on Rose Prestiani, 105 Providence Oaks Point in Milton. I really appreciate the opportunity to provide input to the FAQs, which came out earlier this evening. I thought that was a good move on the part of the city council, and I'm grateful to the city council members with whom I spoke prior to this meeting. I really appreciate the opportunity to provide some real-time, quote, face-to-face-type input. However, I believe it is important for the city council to really formally commit. It seems like there's a strong recommendation with a lot of corresponding data to support it, to move ahead with this proposal, but I formally, the city council, I believe, needs to formally commit to the Milton residents, at least the following two concepts, that the property will be used for passive purposes. This was referred to several times in the FAQs, which I think is appropriate, but I think the missing language for me was in perpetuity, so that we know that once it becomes passive, it remains passive, that things will not change in the future. I think that was the purpose behind the green space, so I think that language would be appropriate. And again, reinforce that the city doesn't really need a swimming pool, doesn't need to manage and maintain tennis courts or a clubhouse, but repurposing it may have some practical application. Also, I think a formal commitment to the residents, that these citizens will be fully engaged in how, and not engage, not only engaged in conversation, be able to participate sort of in a voting-type referendum as to what the plans will be, the uses for this land, since it's quite a bit of land for which a lot of opportunities have already been identified. So, to engage them, and the plans must include the total cost of ownership, and I think as one of the city council members stated, the lost potential revenue, so the net gain, if you will, because putting 50 homes in with taxes, et cetera, there is a revenue stream there, so I think all of that needs to be kept in consideration. So, thank you for allowing me to make those comments and raise those questions, and I look for that in perpetuity language. Thank you.
Okay, Sudi, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mr. Brad Serf. I do have an affidavit that has been notarized, and he's representing Wood Valley.
Counsel, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. My name is Brad Serf. I live at 15190 High Grove Road in Milton, Georgia. So, if you're familiar with the course and you're on the 18th fairway, I live at the 150 marker, looking up towards the clubhouse. And so, a couple of things I just wanted to share with you. I know that this is sort of preliminary. I'm trying to, as I've looked through the materials, determine that it looks like a couple of weeks ago, there was an opportunity to pursue this. The contract appears to be something that needs to be executed, and due diligence period ends December 15th with closing no later than January 15th, so relatively tight timeframe for what's going to take place. I think from my perspective, the concerns are, is we don't know what's going to take place. There are roughly 60 homes in the Wood Valley neighborhood, of which I collect the dues for and kind of maintain the association. The immediate concerns I think I have, you know, Steve mentioned that, you know, it already has golf cart paths that are in place. Most of those golf cart paths are relatively narrow, and they all are positioned up against our property lines. And so, if you were ever to go to Fowler Park or the Greenway over in Alpharetta and look at what it looks like on the weekend there on a pretty day, there might be a few thousand people on the Greenway. My concern is, is there may be a few thousand people looking in my back door because the golf cart path adjoins my property on the backside. And so, I have some serious concerns about that, the vandalism that's taken place at our other parks, and the question of why we've never developed the Birmingham Park, when we've got 200 acres of the street, we have all this money that we've discussed, but we've done nothing in that site to do anything to create this trail system. The traffic, there are roughly 100 parking places in the existing site now. In the event the city chose not to run that, they would have to figure out how to use the parking for an entry point or use the parking for the events that took place there for whoever were to acquire it. I guess you could move parking into the bottom part, which would be the eastern section off of Densmore in the floodplain, and enter the property from there. The questions I think I have related to all of this is just, there's been no real discussion of what the impact outside of the idea, the concept are, and I think it's a point that it ought to be tabled, and the consideration ought to move forward in a better-informed process. I believe the taxes on the property are about $37,000 a year is what's collected under the country club piece. The change eliminates that, but the real question is, is we've had two lots in our subdivision sell, both in the 225 range in the last six months. What are the values of our properties going to be after the redevelopment? I bought a house 10 years or 12 years ago on a golf course. I didn't really buy to be on a public access course, and so, I think those are the concerns that myself and a number of our neighbors will have. I would ask that in the event you do choose to move forward, that you look at creating buffers between the residences and the course. Right now, anyone can walk off the course into your yard. On my side, I think that there's only a handful of us that have a fence, some sort of buffer that keeps people from looking basically into the backyards. The ability to buy parts of that land and maybe push that buffer a little bit further back would be beneficial to us, but my concerns are still that we don't have a lot of information related to what the plan is. It's just let us buy this, and then we'll decide what we're going to do with it after the fact that as a resident bothers me. So, I appreciate your time and appreciate you letting me share my information, and I look forward to your decision.
Thank you. Sudi, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Michael Martin.
My name is Michael Martin, and I live at 1820 High Grove Club Drive in Wood Valley, which is the neighborhood that's going to be directly affected by this project. And I want to thank Mr. Brad Serf for his comments. He represents all of us, and he's been a great volunteer in our neighborhood, and we are very lucky to have him. So, thank you, Brad. When I bought my house 12 years ago here, I was looking for a quiet place, a peaceful place, a place where I could raise two kids, and the only negative I've ever experienced here is I get 150 golf balls a week in my backyard, so if anybody needs any, I have some. Other than that, I didn't expect horses there. I didn't expect traffic there. I live right on the floodplain, right next to both creeks. There's a creek that cuts across the golf course and then runs into Chicken Creek, I believe, and it floods regularly. I have a neighbor that when it floods, his whole side yard floods completely, and he can't use it. And I just don't understand why, all of a sudden, we're finding out about something that nobody had the courtesy to talk to us about ahead of time, and I think that the entire neighborhood is upset about that particular aspect. I look at this as a bankruptcy flip. The golf course went bankrupt, somebody else bought it, and they're going to make a profit on the taxpayers' back, and I don't see that it benefits all of the taxpayers of Milton. There are many other properties in Milton that can be readily developed, and I think what we have here is certain special interest groups that have certain things that they want, and they're going to do them on the backs of other people. They don't care, and I think that's very unfortunate, and I think that needs to be looked at. Mr. Krokoff made a comment earlier this evening that he didn't have the tax impact figures, and I asked, why not? And the other comment he made was that they didn't have public notice of this yet. We're finding out about it like this week. And so, I think, I strongly urge all of the members of the council, so I'm sure they have the best interest of the city and the citizens at heart, to take this into next year with the new council and to involve all of the members of the community, particularly the members of Wood Valley who are directly affected. One of the things the people who bought in Wood Valley wanted was a nice little country club neighborhood. If this comes in, we lose our country club, we lose our swimming pool. Basically, you're destroying our neighborhood. Please don't do that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Sudi, if you could please call the next.
Next speaker is Teri O'Brien.
Can you speak up a little bit? I can't hear a word you're saying.
Teri O'Brien.
Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for, excuse me, listening to me, and I appreciate you just hearing us all about our views. My name's Teri O'Brien. I'm a Milton resident, over 14 years. I live on Bethany Church Road, and I can't...
Do you mind giving your address, Mr. O'Brien, just for the record?
2535 Bethany Church Road.
Okay, thank you.
And I moved to this community for, my work is, I'm the tennis director and head pro at Milton Country Club. I've been there for, since 1996. Last 22 years, I've seen the country club grow from, the tennis players from 18 to over 200, and that's just on four courts. So, I wish the city would take in effect, not only that our community is, you know, definitely land and green space, but we are also really good in tennis, and we have a large tennis community, especially in the Alta world, and team tennis. I have a farm, I have animals, I am, you know, excited about, you know, the possibility of having options to have trails, but I really feel like to, you know, for the community to nix the tennis courts and the swimming pool, and it's just hard to imagine all the years I've put into being there and the families I've taught to just drop that. You know, most of my, you know, people I teach, I teach any kids from four to age 70. 90% of my 200 actually walk to the tennis courts or they live in the Milton area, and that's a pretty big base of, you know, people coming from Wood Valley, North Valley, or across the street. Alta is a large part, as I said. In the spring of 2018, we have 17 Alta teams on four courts, which is the most in all of Georgia for a four-court facility. You know, the supplies that we've had, you know, I've seen five different owners come and go over the 22 years, and basically, no funds for the tennis program, but people didn't, it didn't matter. People still came, it's part of the community, part of the base where they want to play Let's see, in the, over the, the teams are very competitive. We offer also beginner and advanced. We have won 125 division titles, 34 city titles, which is pretty good for a small club. I do teach a lot of kids that are on the Milton and Cambridge teams that would be affected by this. You know, I just hope that the city will take in effect the growing part of tennis as part of our community as well, and to keep that in mind, especially that we don't have any tennis in our city, and this could be something really good to be a part of. And so, you know, Alpharetta has over 14 courts in both North Park and elsewhere, so it would be important for our tennis community and players to have that. So, please consider keeping it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have an answer to Councilmember Lust's question, if you'd like it now or in the end.
That's it. Go ahead.
The city of Milton portion of taxes alone is about $7,000 a year. In reference to offsetting the costs of whatever development would be, obviously, would depend entirely upon what's developed there, but that's going to be the case anywhere that we buy anything with green space dollars, because we should be offsetting building that would be going on. So, in that regard, it's, regardless of where we go, we'll have that issue.
All right, Sudi, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Steve Tipton.
This is my first trip to the new city headquarters, and it's a lot fancier. It's very nice. First of all, thanks to you, to the mayor and the city council for the vision that they've had in grasping the opportunity to preserve part of Milton as green space. Sometimes you have to move pretty fast, but when opportunity presents itself for us to do good things for the long-term benefit of our community, this is a great opportunity for that to happen.
Mr. Tipton, I apologize for, would you mind stating your address for the record?
Oh, I'm Steve Tipton, 920 Autumn Close, Milton, Georgia. 20 years from now, somebody's going to be sitting somewhere having breakfast, and this place is going to be developed out at that particular point in time, probably. And they'll go, how in the world did we ever preserve 140 acres or 137 acres in the middle of Milton, which will have trails, places for people to walk, families to do things? And this is one of those opportunities, and I thank you for your vision. I know that no decision isn't without considerations and things that you're going to have to do to help people out through this, but it's a great opportunity, and I speak in favor as a citizen. to help people out through this, but it's a great opportunity, and I speak in favor as a citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sud, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Bob Volz.
Good evening. My name's Bob Volz. I live at 15210 High Grove Road in the Wood Valley shop, uh, Wood Valley Complex. I'm going to propose to you mostly in a question form, so please bear with me as we go through this. One of the first things I wanted to bring up is it is a $5 million expenditure, of which we think there's probably over a $2 million profit by the people you're buying from within the last just couple of weeks that this thing came up. They not, they need the money so that they can buy Crooked Creek. Sorry about that, Joe, but that's the truth, and you know, I think you know it. In the case of parcel one, which is your first parcel in the front, according to a document, four point some odd acres, that has the building to swim, the tennis, and the clubhouse, and the equipment barn. You know, you can't, that's not green space, so that's got to come from other money. I think I understood it from the slides, although they were a bit fast, but, you know, some of us need some time to be able to visualize that a, a little more. So, again, we need more, more time. Part two of the question is also 5 millionths of, a big chunk of our bond, if the full 5 million comes out of that $25 million bond. Not that I'm against the green space part, I'm just currently against this since it came up so quickly. Of the existing parkland in Milton, I have to ask the questions. How many of those parks have tennis courts? Ours was refurbished about a year and a half ago, so you've got some great new tennis courts. How many have a swimming pool? I don't think any of them currently have swimming pools. We've got a new swimming pool that was built about two or three years ago, rebuilt totally, from ground up. The total surrounding subdivisions don't have any, and, and therefore, they love to use ours. That would be an income stream for you. What do you plan to do, and why can't you plan at least a nine-hole golf course? No city probably, you're probably thinking, no city wants to run it, but if you had it under the right people, you could. When we were a nine-hole course back in 1996 and so forth, and even later when we added the other, we had probably close to 300 members and it grew to 450 members. And yes, there's lots of problems now. Another point is horse-riding trails. We're all very concerned about having horses in our backyards, because some of us do not have fencing that would be proper. And also, if you have walking trails, horse trails, how do they coexist? That, that would be a problem, and we certainly do not want a Will's Park, uh, Exquarian situation, excuse my language, but I can't pronounce that word. We're concerned about the safety of our adjacent land, more people, horses, bikes, you know, what's the planning throughout it? One of the things that you sent out in a recent quick notice was that the police can manage it. Well, the police, I don't know how they're going to be driving around since it's supposed to be green space. What, what's the meaning of a passive park? I think I understand it, but who's going to take care of it once it's there? If it's all wildflowers, that would be great, but again, wildflowers die off and they look terrible. Right now, we've got nice, I, I'm not trying to make it funny. Right now, we have nice green grass in the, in the summer, and then, of course, dyed-out sod. Also, you mentioned about sod. As a side point, isn't that a defeat of the green space program if you're going to try and sell the sod? Let me go quickly, what's hidden that we're missing in this deal that was so quick? I don't think there's much, but there's got to be something. Where's the money coming from? After you purchase it, who's going to take care of all that land? That's a big chunk of land. We hear that, you know, the one new park over there still doesn't even have the trails. A lot of us have really concerned ourselves with that. Respectfully, we do also ask you to defer. Maybe it's only another week, but you give a lot more people a chance to read it. I'm sure there's people in our subdivision. In fact, I, I got, got an email from one, said, "What the H is going on? I just got in." You know, they, they've been away. People trail in Milton, as you well know. So, I think we need more time, and if you could defer it, that would be great. Other than that, I say I would be against it. I certainly don't want homes in the back of my property. I am adjacent to the 18th Fairway also, two houses up from Brad. I've only got 28 seconds left. I would appreciate whatever you can do regarding these comments, and if you can answer them, that's fine, but we would tend to say that we're against it right now until you can give us more time and get all the people involved. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Sud, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Our next speaker is Bill Bryant.
My name is Bill Bryant. I live at 1740 High Grove Club Drive. I am the regent with developer of this land. We are still dealing with Fulton County, so I cannot blame this council. This goes back 30 years, 30 years. Where were you at in 30 years? Some of you probably were in grade school. We invested much money in this development. And I'd like to present it on the idea, and I don't want to bore you, on the idea of the value that our community and, no one has brought in about, there's about 200 people or property owners that surround this property. Why should we build more houses in there? I mean, we've got 137 acres of parkland now, and we're paying the City of Milton $37,000 a year. But that's not really the value. The question was asked, how many, or how much taxes is being paid by these 200 people? Part of your floodplain is on the opposite side of Chicken Creek, and that side goes over to North Valley. There's homes in North Valley that's worth $3,000, $4 million. I calculated that the 200 parcels would probably pull about $20 million, or two, oh, excuse me, $200 million a year, because you're paying $7,000 to $10,000 times 200. I think I'm correct. So, what we'd like to do, we think this is a very bad example of taxpayers' money. We have paid for 30 years about $1 million if you take 30 years times $37,000. But we have also increased the value of the people around us. And this all happened when golf course communities, and I go through, there's 10 or 12 that's giving you the same benefit. Fulton County don't want you to take it. They don't want you to do what Jan Jones said they would do, to make this a full county, Milton County. See, Milton County was promised to us about 12 years ago. We voted, and it's been divided into three cities, Milton, Alpharetta, John's Creek. There's 12 golf courses with a total of probably 1,000 acres that you're getting free and getting taxes paid on. I, I hope that you will consider this. We did not know, notice. We talked with the guy that bought it three years ago, and he combined it with 20 other golf courses, and somebody put a $8 million loan on the 20 courses, but their headquarters in Virginia. We're not headquarters. We live on the property, and I hope these people, or you will consider us as you think about this. Thank you again, but I cannot lay blame on this council. I'm laying blame on Fulton County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sud, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Brian Bush.
Hi, I'm Brian Bush. I live at 1425 Birmingham Road, and I just wanted to say thank you to the council for looking at this property. I think it's an excellent opportunity to expand the green space and trails initiative. I think something like 82% of Milton voted for the, the green space referendum, and I just wanted to say thank you, and I hope it moves forward. I think everybody will benefit from it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Sud, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is James Brackett.
Hello, my name's James Brackett, 380 Eagles Pass, here in Milton, Georgia. Thank you again for bringing this referendum up. I've been, I grew up with most of these people on this golf course with my departed father-in-law since 1990, so a lot of affection for the golf course. I hate to see it go, but it looks like there's no choice. It's going to be a golf course, there's going to be homes. And, you know, I also used to ride my bike around this place back when it was all horse farms. You could ride for days, no, no problem. There was places to go, there's places to send your kid. Like when we all grew up, we had, we could go to places. There's no place for your kids to go nowadays. We need places where we can all go walk and enjoy nature, and send your kids and, and ride bikes. You know, and the, the revenue from the homes, well, then we can just tear everything down and build a ton of homes, but, you know, we need some green space for our families and for relaxation. So, I'm all in favor for this, of this, and I appreciate you guys bringing it up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sud, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Leslie Harper.
Hello, thank you. My name's Leslie Harper. I live at 1490 Lewis Road, and I, well, I, of course, heard about this like everyone else. I've heard several things, and my question really, I'm worried, is we live on a one-lane dirt road, and I don't really want a thoroughfare coming through because we have entrance to the golf course. I'm on hole number nine. You know, our, I, I know that Alpharetta High School uses our club, and I think Milton does too, and I think that, you know, if Milton is going to buy this land, which I don't understand how two golf courses were for sale for, I don't know, six, seven months, eight, eight months, for $7 million, and then y'all come in and offer them, and they were going to use it. They were going to, Woodmont was going to run our club as a club. They had no intentions on, you know, I guess y'all got wind of it and ran in there and said, "Well, we'll give you $5 million," which, you know, I don't know all the details, so maybe I'm wrong. But if you do put green space, I guess that's okay, but like I said, we're on a one-lane dirt road. We don't want cars up and down our road. I don't know if we get a choice for that. I heard also that y'all have already bought land on the other side of my neighbors, so I think that this has kind of been, you know, backdoor, you know, we don't really know about all this stuff, but there's stuff been going on about this golf course as far as that y'all had done as a city that we're not aware of. So, I don't know if that's true or not, but I did, I actually was told that it's already been bought. I guess it was part of the Kennedy's property for maybe an easement there, which would be okay for me, but I would say if y'all are going to have it all be green space, please let them enter up there at Dinsmore. I mean, you know, we, we live on a little dirt road, and people come down our road all the time, and when they want to back up, that's where they back into, my driveway, and a lot of times they hit my keypad for my gate and knock it down. And anyways, I'm really upset about it. I'm really sad. Hope it doesn't happen, but I guess there's nothing we can do. I've already planned this all out, and it's happened so fast. It would be nice for the City of Milton to have a public golf course, along with a pool and tennis courts. It would be a money-making endeavor. You've got 70 acres across the street, already has horse trails on it. I know it belongs to the Board of Education, but I'm, I'm opposed to it. I just, I really don't want a parking lot on the other side of my fence. I live on hole number nine, and I, I just, I can't stand the thoughts of people coming up and down our dirt road to walk their dog or whatever, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you for letting me vent. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sud, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Scott Sawyer.
Hello, Mayor, Council. My name's Scott Sawyer. I live at 787 Quarter Path Lane. Thank you, Milton City staff and Green Space Bond Committee, for your work. My family and I are Milton Country Club members, and our home is adjacent to the 14th Fairway in Green. So, overlook the, the fairway and the pond down by North Valley. The opportunity for the city to purchase Milton Country Club and return the property to North Valley Conservation Area is worthy of consideration. Restored forests, ponds, wetlands, clean streams, and enhanced habitat, wildlife habitats are desirable outcomes. The club has struggled financially in the past and has gone into receivership twice in the past 10 years. While it may be desirable for the course to remain private, club revenue may not be adequate to meet expenses and make a profit. There are currently only 60 club members, and membership has continued to decrease over the past few years. Competition for members and golfers is challenging since there are eight golf courses within eight miles of the club. As a green space, privacy and security would be two critical concerns for the homeowners like ourselves that connected the property and those other homeowners on. We live on Quarter Path Lane, High Grove Road, Dinsmore, Freemanville, and Lewis Roads. So, I had a few questions. If the city were to purchase the club, these adjacent homeowners wonder, how will the homeowners be engaged in the green space design? Will green space buffers be included in the design to address privacy concerns and improve the viewshed? Can nature trails, if included, be located away from existing homes? And finally, how will the course buildings, fairways, and greens be maintained during the design phase? Milton Country Club currently provides many of the land conservation goals of the Milton Green Space Bond. However, its long-term viability as a private country club is uncertain due to past financial problems and market forces. The opportunity to consider the club as a restored conservation area is a worthy endeavor. Thank you for, very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Sud, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Colt Whittle.
Hello, I'm Colt Whittle, 2005 Drummond Pond. I'm here today to support it, not just as a private citizen, but also, I also serve as the Chair of the Green Space Committee. And, you know, I'm not going to go into our whole process. We put out a, well, the city, I should say, put out an announcement a couple of weeks ago as an alert, just kind of to describe the process that we went through to evaluate properties throughout the city. And it's a lot of information. It's fairly comprehensive, so I don't want to go through that today. But I just simply want to say, you know, we have a tremendous opportunity here. You know, I don't think we're ever going to get another one. As somebody who has looked, as part of our, my role in our committee, at properties throughout the city- As somebody who has looked, as part of my role in our committee, at properties throughout the city, it's just very unlikely we'll ever get the opportunity to buy this much acreage in one shot, particularly a one-point-six-mile strip along a really pretty creek. I think the concerns that have been raised, you know, are, the vast majority of them are very valid. But there are also opportunities to solve for those issues in how we use the property. You know, even the narrowest sections of the property are still wide enough that even though in the short term, maybe we use the cart path trails that are there, maybe over the long term, we, you know, move a trail and construct a trail that runs along the creek and away from houses. There's lots of opportunities. You know, the great thing about it is that within the context of whatever plan we create to use this property for conservation and green space and the greenway, we have the context to address the concerns as much as possible. And then let me just also echo, I think it was Steve Tipton who made the point a little while ago, that I wanted to bring up, you know, I've lived in a number of neighborhoods, you know, from, you know, where I lived in Colorado thirty years ago to, you know, where we used to live in the Druid Hills neighborhood in Atlanta, where, you know, long ago, generations ago, they had the foresight to have green spaces run throughout the community. You know, in the case of Druid Hills, they were, you know, gorgeously, beautifully designed by Frederick Law Olmstead. You know, in the case of Boulder, Colorado, they were purchased through a tax on the citizens of Boulder County, you know, that started back in the seventies. And the point is that they acquired land, they set it into conservation use forever, passive, you know, in basically a trust. And that's, you know, kind of what we're trying to do here. So tremendous opportunity. I think if you roll forward the clock ten, twenty, thirty, forty years, this is something that we're all gonna be glad we did. So happy to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sudi, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Stephen Mayo.
Good evening. My name's Stephen Mayo. I live at fifteen two ninety High Grove Road in Milton. I'm coming before you tonight to urge you to postpone making a decision about this tonight. I guess my first point is more a question. I fail to see the logic of doing this. I get the whole thing about setting aside green space, but we're talking about space that's already green space. Golf courses are green space. This particular setup is, it just seems like a very odd configuration, this horseshoe U-shaped piece of land to use as a public park or recreation area. And also, it seems that there's no real plan of what to do with this once it's been acquired. We've heard a lot of different ideas, well, maybe this, or maybe that. I saw cell towers come up there. That doesn't strike me as something that's adding to, quote, "green space." My second point is that there is significant impact on several neighborhoods, not just Wood Valley that's been mentioned so many times tonight, but Wood Valley Two, Fieldstone, North Valley. And then there are abutters that are directly on Freemanville Road and Dinsmore Road. Wood Valley neighborhood loses our swimming tennis. As has been mentioned by several other speakers, there's no real buffer between this land and its use and the abutting houses in the neighborhood. A point that has not been raised by anybody else, I don't think, is also the configuration of this relative to Dinsmore Road and Freemanville Road is gonna make it extremely difficult for the police department to patrol that area, particularly at night. And this is just gonna be ripe for a location for the teenagers to be doing drugs. It's gonna be very difficult to police it. And finally, the other last point I want to make is that the, the whole process just has a bad feel to it. I certainly understand the need for secrecy in negotiating land purchases by municipalities. But this thing seems to have moved so rapidly without the opportunity to have any kind of dialogue or input with the many abutters that are gonna be affected by this. I think, at least in my mind, when I think of a track of land being acquired to be set aside as green space, you normally picture there may be a half a dozen, maybe a dozen abutters that are gonna be directly impacted by that. In this case, you probably got close to a hundred. And other than this one real quick, fly-by-the-seat-of-our-pants, there's been no opportunity to have any kind of input, let alone dialogue. I mean, there really needs to be some back and forth. And finally, as also has been mentioned by a couple of other speakers, the sellers of this land bought this last week for somewhere around two-and-a-half million dollars. You know, we're now gonna, taxpayers are now gonna pay five million? Something about those secret negotiations that I'd like to know a little more about. And finally, the urgency that's being conveyed is of the city's making. Triumph Golf has assumed that they were gonna be running this thing as a golf course for the foreseeable future, and they will be next month and the month after that. There's no urgency associated with making a decision about this tonight. So just to summarize, we're using finite resources allocated to acquire green space to acquire a space that's already a green space. There are many potential negatives for about a hundred abutters. And there certainly are questions about the financial aspects of this deal. So I urge council to more thoroughly examine all of this before taking a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sudi, do we have any more public?
I have five to read in the record that are very short. The first is from Linda Weeks, who's in support. She says, "I am in support of any initiative that preserves the green space at Milton Country Club. I would prefer that the swimming and tennis courts are maintained." Next is from Nancy Vols at one-five-two-one-zero High Grove Road in Milton, in opposition. Next is Bruce Tryansky at one-eight-five-zero High Grove Drive. He is in support and states, "Purchase of this property is an important step forward in keeping Milton green." Next is Richard Ullor at one-five-two-zero-zero High Grove Road in Milton, who is in opposition and states, "This item needs to be postponed until all interested parties can study the plan." And the last one is from David Weeks at one-five-two-two-zero High Grove Road, who is in, he didn't check support or opposition, but states, "More information is needed on both Triumph Golf's and Milton City Council's plans before local residents and current members of the golf club can make informed decisions and vote accordingly." And that is all.
Okay, thank you. First off, I want to thank everybody that's here, not only here tonight, but that has spoken, and a lot of good questions and feedback. And now I want to allow the council and to talk with staff and Joe to make a statement first, if you want to.
Yeah, so back in nineteen ninety-eight, when I first moved to Georgia and was lucky enough to buy a home in what would soon be Milton, I was interested in buying a house on a country club. I played a little bit of golf, not a whole bunch, but I live in Crooked Creek, as Mr. Vols pointed out. And over the twenty years since then, Crooked Creek and Milton Country Club have had a relationship. It's on-again, off-again kind of a thing. Originally, the two country clubs were completely separate. Then they came into common ownership. Then they separated again. I don't even know what the condition is today, but there is some relationship there. And since there is a relationship there, regardless of what my thoughts are or how I feel about this particular agenda item, I think it would be in the best interest of the council if I recused myself just to make sure that there wasn't any perceived impropriety or conflict of interest. So.
Okay. And again, so we appreciate all the feedback. I will say this. A few weeks ago, the Green Space Committee, Mr. Whittle had spoken, but they've been working diligently for quite a while now. A few weeks ago, they approached our staff and then the mayor and council with this proposal. And we're really excited because it really made a whole lot of sense for what our citizens want based on surveys and questionnaires and the overall goal and all the criteria. So that being said, this was brought forward in a positive, exciting thing. What a great opportunity. And I know that's the way I took it. I believe the council did. So the only reason I say that, there was not an intent to behind-the-scenes work a deal or whatever, and we can get into that in a minute, but the timing or whatever. This was brought to us as an opportunity. From what I understand, the sellers were going to sell it. The sellers bought it, purchased it, and were going to sell it and had other options. So we've had comments, and I've heard from people saying, "Well, just keep it a country club or keep it a golf course." I don't believe that's an option because I believe the sellers, and I can't speak for them, but what I've been told, their intention is to parcel it off and whether develop some homes, you know, sell some other land to other property owners, sell the building off to have a private venue there or whatever. I believe that's the direction they were going. So the opportunity, and the city got interested in it to take a look at it. So I only state that to say, because I know some people are saying, "Well, why don't we just leave it a golf course?" I don't believe that's the scenario. And also, I'm gonna ask our city attorney and our city manager to kind of explain the process. And again, like I said from the beginning, obviously, any property negotiations has to be talked about privately first. But immediately after we decide to do something, we brought it public, which we have. So again, the whole sense of urgency and timing is not, this opportunity just happened, and it needs to be done quick if we want to do something or the other options the property seller can take advantage of. So again, and that being said, we also want plenty of public input. Tonight, we're looking at putting it on a contract, not agreeing to purchase it, but putting it under contract, which will then give us the opportunity to purchase it, but explore it more, get property appraisals and whatnot to make sure that the values are there, that kind of thing. But if you two could at least address that a little bit, the process and all that, to make sure that everybody is very clear that this is not a, there wasn't a deal already done. There's not a deal done. We're not signing on a deal right now. We're bringing it forward as quick as we can.
Mayor, I'll take a shot at answering that because candidly, I need to walk you through the terms of the contract anyway, and that can serve as a springboard for answering some of those questions. First of all, that's right. I mean, the property is under a contract with the city. This opportunity came to the council, and yes, it did come on a time-sensitive basis. And candidly, you could look at it from two perspectives, that it's happening very fast, or you could look at it from the perspective that the city of Milton is being nimble in attempting to be opportunistic with respect to a parcel that may very well get away from it. I mean, I guess how you view it depends upon what your position is on it. But from my perspective, the legalities of it have worked precisely the way the law anticipates that it would work. And that is, is that these sort of opportunities come to the city council not only through the Green Space Committee, but obviously, we've been buying property in Milton before that committee, and they come to the council, and we meet and can discuss them at executive session to determine whether there's an interest. And if there is an interest, the instructions going forward. And that happened in this situation on an expedited basis, given that it was seen as a somewhat fleeting opportunity, and we would need to be nimble and act quick. And so we have undertaken to do some very rapid due diligence, which that doesn't mean that it's not been thorough. It just means that it's been at an accelerated pace to make sure that we could take advantage of this if you want to. And again, what the law anticipates is, is that you can discuss it in executive session. You can do various things in executive session. When I say executive session, I mean a closed portion of the meeting that the public is not able to see. But then what the law also anticipates is, is that before anything binding is done, is that it has to come out into the open session, and it has to be disclosed in open session. That's actually a change in the law that occurred in two thousand and twelve. And I, candidly, I thought it was a good one. And so what the law anticipates is that before we can do something binding, we have to come forward in open session, and we have to reveal the substantive terms of the acquisition in open session before it can be binding on the city, which is, of course, the interest in doing that this evening. It's no accident that your agenda header contains the tax parcel numbers as well as the value of the acquisition, as well as the entity with whom we will be acquiring the property from. However, while it is occurring at somewhat of a rapid pace on our end, it is also occurring, I think, on a rapid pace on the seller's end because the entity that is identified on your agenda header is Triumph Golf LLC. Actually, Triumph Golf LLC has now formed another company called Milton Interests LLC. Triumph is actually a Texas corporation. Milton Interests LLC is a Georgia corporation, of which Triumph is the organizer of that entity. And so if you look in the contract in front of you, and I hope the council all have, a contract that has been placed in front of you, you will see that the name of the seller is Milton Interests LLC. And so I want to make sure that I disclose that because I think that is one of the components that I have to disclose before we can enter into this contract. The other substantive terms, and you'll note that on the back, and don't flip to the back of the contract, but if you noted in the back of the contract, at the signature line, it is Milton Interests LLC by and through Triumph Golf LLC. So that's who would actually be executing the document. The acquisition price has been stated repeatedly as five million dollars. The individual parcel numbers and the acreages of those parcel numbers are set forth in the contract. With respect to our due diligence period, again, working as thoroughly and aggressively as we can, the due diligence period under this agreement would run through December fifteenth of two thousand and seventeen. So by that time, we would have, for instance, things like a survey. We would have an appraisal. We would have title commitments and title insurance all done. If you were to enter into this contract this evening and approve this contract this evening, we would have until the close of business on December fifteenth to get out of the contract. And when I say get out of the contract, I mean get out of the contract with no loss of anything, no loss of earnest money, no loss of any financial opportunities whatsoever. The earnest money that we will pay promptly upon entering into this contract is a hundred thousand dollars. If we end the contract or terminate the contract by the close of business on December fifteenth, the city of Milton would have a right to a refund of the full one hundred thousand dollars. However, on December sixteenth, that right no longer exists, and we would have to go through with the contract in almost every scenario. We would have to go through with the contract and acquire the property. As one of the speakers mentioned, and they were correct, the anticipated closing date would be January fifteenth of two thousand and eighteen. The city manager was likewise correct. If you entered into this contract this evening, a contingent of Milton personnel along with the seller would go to the property and begin to review it and identify any portions of the property. Typically, we're talking about personality, things that can be removed from the property. And then we would itemize the list, and those things we identify the seller could in fact take with them. Obviously, the larger things, the structures, the permanent improvements, the fixtures, they would remain on the property post-closing. Just going through the highlights, I just want to make sure that I have done my job of going through the critical issues. Otherwise, this contract is a fairly typical variation of the sorts of acquisition contracts that the city of Milton is used to. The only thing that is unique, at least in my opinion, about the contract is, is number one, the size of the earnest money is a little larger than we typically do. one, the size of the earnest money is a little larger than we typically do. I think that's certainly to indicate the city's interest in this and our good faith commitment to it. And the due diligence period is accelerated. There's no question that those things are true. But as far as the legality of it and how it has been approached by the city, this is exactly the way the statute is supposed to work. And that is, the city has the ability to think about it, to consider it, to even engage in negotiations, so it can get the best value that it believes it's getting. But then, of course, the public does have a right to know. And before it is consummated, the public has a right to know, and that has in fact occurred. There still will be an opportunity, though, as I mentioned, for the city to get out of the contract, should it wish to, by December 15th. I do want to mention one more thing, Mr. Mayor, before we end, and just, this is with respect to the agenda header. One of the parcel numbers in the agenda, and this was my error, contained a number that was not correct. So it's the, I think it's the 31.34 acre tax parcel. It's correct in the contract, but the agenda header is missing a number four. So I just want to state that for the record, and that was my error. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them. I'm sure the city manager will as well. Thank you.
Okay. One question I want to address is the timing, because I dislike some comments on, you know, I'd like to see you put something under contract and have six months, you know, due diligence to work through. Again, I think there was some, and also with the price, depending on, from what I understand, it was a package deal where they bought two courses and then the seller wanted to sell this property and whether it's to the city or had some other options to do. You know, it's, whether they paid a penny for it and sold it for $200 or whatever, we have to make sure, and if they can sell it for that, that's their right. We have to make sure that the city gets the best value that we can. And again, like I said, it would have to, even if we put it under contract now, it'd have to be appraised and, you know, if it didn't appraise for that, I'm sure that the council would rethink that. We certainly don't want to waste any taxpayer dollars. But the timing, and maybe if the city manager can address the timing. Again, like I said, we just got this information recently. We've processed it and now we're bringing it public. We're trying to communicate it as quick and as well as possible, but it has been a quick timeline. So Steve, if you could address that, the reason on the timeline is so quick.
I just want to clear up one piece of what you just stated, Mayor, if I could.
Sure.
I don't know what the connection may be between the Milton Country Club and what's going on with Crooked Creek, kind of like what Councilmember Longoria said, there's on-again, off-again relationships. I don't know if this seller that we would potentially be buying from, whether or not they have bought, though I don't believe they have Crooked Creek, or if they ever will buy Crooked Creek. So I don't know what the connection would be there. But one thing they were very clear in my conversations is, well, if there is a connection, it's very, I can't think of the best term to use, it would be very minimal. And one has nothing to do with the other. So I just want to be very clear about that. As far as the timelines, the way it was addressed to me is that they are looking to, and as many people have said, this is basically, for lack of a better term, a flip for them. They're not looking to run a golf course. There was no intention for them to ever run this as a golf course, at least from the conversations that I had both with the agent and the owner of the company. They had always been, they were one of two options where it was going to be the outcome. It was going to be sold off to the highest bidder or us. That was it. Those were the only two options. They were, they had, for what was described to me as other officers on the table, they were looking to make this flip quick because the money that's tied up in this deal is obviously what, they need that money elsewhere. So there is what has been driving the timelines. I know that they are looking to close in the first half of January.
Is it safe to say they had other options, or at least, from what we're told, they had other options, that whether parcel loaded up or whatever, that, you know, the city was not their only option as far as a sale?
I can only tell you what was told to me. I didn't independently speak with other interested parties, but I was told that there were two other developers that were looking to go in together. One was going to develop one part, one was going to develop another part and potentially sell off the top piece. There was different options going on.
And the other thing I'd like to say too, based on public comment, again, we're processing through this. The first step, you know, if we put it under contract, second step, once you purchase it, but it's just like any other public process, there would be lots of community input. You know, I've heard, you know, folks have commented that, hey, you don't seem to have a plan. Well, in two or three weeks, you can't have a real definite plan. You also want to include the public and do what's right. So, you know, that's always on the table, that it would be a full public participation. You know, all the other options been mentioned tonight, you know, possibly selling part of the, you know, some folks that live along the golf course may want to buy part of the green space. That's been brought up before, and maybe buy an easement or buy the property to have a larger buffer, whatever. If this were to go through, anything that is done will have open and public participation. It'll have a plan done and it'll be done in the best interest of all the citizens and those that are affected. But again, I'm just speaking forward if it were to go through. But I'm going to open it up to the council with questions and comments. Karen?
Based on some comments that were made, I just want to clarify, the money from the Green Space Bond can only be used for passive parks and passive activities. So any property that we purchase using Green Space Bond money, any part of this property would remain passive and be just trails of either walking, biking, equestrian, whatever it is, but it would be a passive use in perpetuity.
I'm going to say that that's a fair statement, but I'm also going to ask Ken to weigh in on that.
Right. So the Green Space Bond money has to be used for the purposes and intent that were set forth in the bond referendum. And so Councilmember Thurman, to the point that you just asked, if it's used with Green Space Bond money, does it have to be kept as Green Space? And the answer is yes, but as with most things in the law, there's always the asterisk. And the asterisk is, is that a city, any government, would have the right to convert that property, some portion of the property, perhaps all of it, to an active use. But if the government does that, it has to replenish the fund, the Green Space Fund, to the same percentage that was used to purchase that portion. So just as a very, you know, example, if 50% of this property, we wanted to convert it to a active use, then we would have to refund the Green Space Bond account 50% of the purchase price because obviously, we would be converting the property. If it's purchased with Green Space Funds.
And the intent, I know we haven't developed a specific plan, but the intent is that the property that is purchased with the Green Space Bond money would be passive and would stay as trails because we would not have the funds to purchase.
So how we protect that in perpetuity, there's a couple of ways. We put easements on them ourselves so it can never be developed, it can never turn into an active use to be able to make sure it's restricted. It could be held in a land trust to make sure that nobody could ever turn this into a use that was never intended. There are a lot of methods in place that would be able to prevent what I believe all your intentions are, and I think what the community is looking for, to prevent that from turning into something that it was never meant to be. So I just want to, just to clear something that Ken said, legally, we could, apparently, if you replenished the funds, you could change the use, but that will be prevented by whichever mechanism you determine or the appropriate method is, is whether through easements or land trust to be able to protect that.
And I assume over the due diligence period, y'all will determine which part of the property is being purchased with the Green Space Bond, because obviously, the swimming pool, tennis courts, and clubhouse cannot be purchased with Green Space Bond money if they're going to be used in any kind of active recreation. So we'll have to determine how, what pot of money gets, the park gets purchased with, for what percentage.
Councilmember Thurman, I agreed with your point when you added that qualifier toward the end of it. Yes, ma'am, that's right. And, you know, so those portions that have quote-unquote "the active components" on them, they can be purchased with the Green Space Fund so long as the expectation when you do the acquisition is that it will remain green space, and that would presumably anticipate perhaps those structures would be raised or what have you. So yes, that's correct, so long as that is our present intention.
And if we want to keep them as a pool and tennis courts, then we use other funds that we do have available, either from our impact fees or money we have set aside over the past five years or so for this type of purchase. We have the funds to pay for that portion of it that we determine is going to be active.
We do, and we're trying to make sure, Stacey and I have been working on this, we're trying to make sure that we build in as much flexibility as possible. So once we get more community input, we can make sure that we have the flexibility to be able to respond to those wants and needs.
Ted, Matt?
A couple of questions. Steve, obviously, a lot of people are kind of, this is their first time here, and so they haven't been familiar with the planning process that we typically go through with new properties. Could you explain what that visioning process looks like to the public whenever we have a piece of property that we have to decide what we're doing or an area like we did with the Crab Apple area or how that works? So if this was purchased and we had to decide what we're going to do with it and we involve the public?
Okay, I got it. I'm sorry, it took me a second. Thank you for reading my face.
Yes.
Similar to what we've done in other areas, when we are coming on to a new endeavor, whether just some of the ideas you said, kind of also what we're doing in Providence Park right now, when we're trying to determine how to use it, we usually consult with an outside company, similar to what we just, again, we just did with Providence Park, so they can do outreach and help us do outreach, make sure that we are getting all the input we can from not only the surrounding community, but the community as a whole, determine what the needs are. In fact, what I referenced here was the Parks and Recreation System Comprehensive Plan. That was a culmination of just that, a partnership that we developed. And they in turn help us gather the information. We reach out to all the stakeholders and we determine a course forward. It's by no means done in any unilateral fashion.
And the stakeholders would be most of the residents of Wood Valley, I'm sure, and anybody else that might be interested.
I would say that they are unique stakeholders in the, when you're talking about the future of what would happen in this area.
Right.
But they will be, they would be part of a larger group, I'm sure.
Okay. And obviously, the timing aspect of this was something that's a concern of everybody, and you and I had talked about that prior. You know, so the question was whether or not there could be a deferral. Is there a possibility that there could be a deferral? Obviously, we have that December 15th timeframe. A week from now, would we have a special call session to do this, again, allow the community to do that? What's the risk in that if we did, or should we not? That's just one of those questions.
You're going to have to weigh the risks on that. I mean, obviously, we're in a tight timeframe. We could, you could certainly decide not to sign the contract tonight, and they, of course, could certainly sign with somebody else. They could have all this during this entire time. I don't know what the risk is because I don't know, I don't know what the outcome could be.
Right.
I just know that the timeframe that we have in this contract is tight. I don't know if those are real or artificial.
Right. And so obviously, with the planning and visioning, I think I heard a couple of concerns, and mainly it was, the good part is we had some residents that came up with some great ideas for what it could be down the road, but I think safety was an issue. Buffers, security, fences have all been mentioned to me prior. Those with the Green Space Bond money we can look at, but we can make adjustments to any of those from a safety precaution perspective for the residents if we needed to. Is that correct?
There were changes I would recommend. I would probably get more officers out on bicycles, get them out into the trails, things along those lines, to be able to circulate them a little bit more. We're probably looking from EMS and fire for just some possible equipment that might be able to deal with if we have any type of rescue that's necessary, you know, way down into the park. From a fencing standpoint, we have encountered this already in future, in past projects, and, you know, something along those lines might work. But, you know, all that was a result of conversations that had occurred between the city and the residences.
Right.
Residents.
Last thing, I guess, if we had to rate the facilities as far as that aspect of it goes, not the Green Space area, but the amenities, you know, would there be a ton of repair in your estimation that we would have to do if we bought those? Or obviously, it depends on the visioning that we would have to do, what we would do with those. But in your estimation, what added expense might come into just for the purchase of this? We don't have any surprises, is basically what I'm asking.
I can't answer that question. I would turn that over to Carter right now, but that would be unfair as well. We've only walked through.
Right.
I have no idea what's going on behind the walls. We've had no inspections done. I don't know what we would be getting, but I would anticipate that that would be part of our due diligence.
Due diligence. Which would happen after, if we agree to sign this thing, we still have that due diligence, but that would allow us an out if we ever found anything that would, that we can...
We have the right to get on the property. We have been on the property already, and this contract further solidifies our right to get on there and aggressively conduct due diligence in addition to the other title work, surveys, and appraisal work we're doing.
I guess the only other question I can ask too, obviously, others' communities have dealt with failing golf clubs around the country, right? And maybe from a staff's perspective, one question was posed too about what happens to valuations of properties in situations where maybe you have a failing golf course, the city purchases it, et cetera. There have been a lot of people that are worried about declining property values. I'm not so sure that's the case here because we are creating a scarcity of land that won't be developed. And usually, that is a higher value if that happens from a selling perspective. But has that been the staff's experience or research as well? Have you even looked at that? Just a question to put on the record to ask.
It would be anecdotal at best. I don't think any of us have the experience to be able to determine which direction the property values would necessarily go. Obviously, they're on a golf course already, which adds to the value of the home. It won't remain a golf course regardless of what the direction it goes, it appears. So I don't know what impact that could have. It would be difficult to say. I could say, by and large, from what we have learned, is that when communities are connected to greenways, it tends to help property value. But this is also a unique circumstance, again, because many of them back up to a golf course, so I don't know what the outcome would be.
Sure. Okay.
Ted, Bill?
I'd like to go back to Karen's point about the requirement in purchasing green space that it shall be dedicated to passive usage. And in so doing, obviously, it would preclude any of the development that has been proposed by other potential buyers. And what's been proposed here is 50 or 51 homes. So obviously, wouldn't have a bunch more homes in your backyard. I've always been a proponent of preserving green space in our community and enhancing our trail system. I think we have a lot of opportunities out here. I live on a gravel road, which is going to be in phase two of our trail system, which will connect to all of these other proposed trails and hopefully, other green spaces out here. I'm concerned, though, about the speed at which this whole operation is taking. And I have some questions. I hate to, brought up on a farm, I'd never buy a pig in a poke. One thing I'm concerned with is the survey. And I believe you said during this due diligence period, up until the 15th of December, we'd be conducting different tasks. One of them is the survey, another is appraisal. What, can you enhance that or give me more information on that?
Councilmember Luss, yes. The appraisal has been ordered, and it has been ordered a while ago, not a long time ago, but a few days ago. We anticipate having the appraisal back either at the end of this week or next week, obviously in time for us to assess the value as compared to the acquisition price, and the same for the survey. And we've asked for the surveyor, obviously, to go out there on an expedited basis. It is an unusually shaped piece of property with multiple parcels, so we need a survey to, for a variety of reasons, to record a consolidated plat, et cetera. But that's going to be done on an accelerated basis. And so things that are done... an accelerated basis. And so, things that are done on an accelerated basis, you know, may cost a little more, but the instruction was to get this done, and we're going to get it done. But, Councilman Burlesque, the best I can tell you is, is that before December 15th, if I have anything to do with it, I will have provided to senior city management an appraisal and a title commitment, if not a title insurance, as well as a comprehensive survey of the property.
Okay. And the survey is important to me.
Yes, sir.
I've been involved in surveys all my life. I'd like to know if we're buying 137 acres, 157 acres?
Or 110.
Or 37 acres?
That's right.
And to that point, further to that point, and there are questions on this FAQ list here that addressed several property owners there that claimed that their properties extended into the golf course itself. And I believe some of them even claimed that they had either granted more property to them. I'm not sure if it was transferred legally or just by verbal agreement. But obviously, a survey and a title search will bring up these points. Further to the title, then, who has clear title on this property? Is it Milton Interests LLC?
That remains to be seen, because, right, and we're going to have to work closely with the seller, because, as we all know, the title work gets things that are of record. And right now, this conveyance between Triumph and Milton may not be of record, so we're going to have to make sure that that is factored in. But the title work will give everything that is of record, probably within the last few months, perhaps later. And of course, it will then be secured by a policy of title insurance. And again, I know that I don't have to tell you what that is, but what that is, is basically an insurance company that will look at a title opinion by a professional attorney, which will not be from my office. It's a third-party attorney, and that will write a policy of insurance for the value that Milton has placed in the property, as well as indemnify if we have any sort of litigation over title, to ensure that we will have a defense to any claim for title. So, yes, that will be done. It will be done in tandem with the survey. Obviously, our hopeful objective is, is that the title insurance has an acreage that closely corresponds with the amount of acreage identified in the survey.
Sure.
If they don't match, that's a little bit of a flag.
Right.
And we would certainly bring that to senior city staff's attention. But again, it is our cautiously optimistic approach that all of these planets will align. If they do not, that's a valid reason for us to meet on December 14th and shut it down, potentially.
Going back to the point about an appraisal, should the appraisal differ significantly one way or the other? What's our position at that point?
That is going to be a matter. I mean, this is not the first time a government has struggled with that very issue. Of course, balancing, being opportunistic, and want to deliver a piece of property that you feel is in the best interest of the community versus being good stewards of the public purse. Those are very legitimate balancing interests that you all are having to do right now. If the appraisal comes back, well, let me just say this, irrespective of what it says, you will know what it says, okay? Just be very clear about that. My obligation is to get it to my client and get it to senior city staff. But then, once we have it, presumably, we will discuss it at a meeting, and depending upon where it is, hopefully, it'll be higher than the value that we were paying for it. If it's lower, then you'll need to consider that. There's no right or wrong answer there. Now, Councilman Burlesque, I don't have to tell you if it's considerably lower than, you know, on the balancing of interests. That may balance more in favor of stopping the transaction.
Well, and I bring this point up for the edification of the folks here in the gallery, too.
Of course.
As to what the whole process is, since we've been through this process
Many, many times. Yes, sir.
One last question here, too. And why I ask this is the issue that we went through with purchasing Providence Park here a couple of years ago. And that purchase was held up for almost 10 years because of some hazardous material that was uncovered on that 40-acre park. And that's, 40 acres is one thing. 137 acres is considerably more to do a Phase One study on a parcel of that size. I question whether we could do something, and I know you said you're going to expedite everything to the greatest extent that you can, but 137 acres is quite a bit to undertake in, what, 10 days?
That's quick. Now, Providence Park was a little bit of an outlier. Obviously, that was a piece of property. We knew there was a contamination issue on that. But your point's well taken. Georgia law requires that any property that is acquired for park and recreation purposes must have no less than a Phase One environmental conducted on it. And we will, of course, comply with the law here. I think your point is, though, just practically speaking, it's a large piece of property for a Phase One environmental.
Right.
And you are correct. It's a large piece of property for a survey to be done on an accelerated basis. But we're doing everything we can to deliver this product, being mindful, of course, that you would still have the right to walk away from it.
But I guess, if it did come up, and nothing was discovered until after final purchase, how can we cover, how can the city be covered in the event that hazardous materials uncovered in the future?
If we get into that sort of a fix, if we get into the point that we have experts coming to us and saying we just can't get it done to the level of professionalism that we need to have it done, or the level of thoroughness that we need to have it done, we'll have a couple of options. Obviously, we'll have to complete it, and one of them might be to think about some sort of an insurance policy to work in indemnification if there's, in fact, some sort of a site that would need to be cleaned up. Obviously, obviously, forgive me, hopefully, given the historic uses of this particular piece of property, and that is one of the elements of a Phase One, is that is, what has the property been historically used for, and does it therefore lend itself to these sorts of environmental issues? Obviously, the degree of scrutiny given to a piece of property where there's been a gas station, for instance, or something with underground storage tanks, is different than it might be for something that's had a golf course for 30 years. Having said that, it still could present a challenge, so I don't want to minimize that.
Well, if we go through with this deal, I'd like to see some provision in the contract that we are covered in the eventuality that something's discovered down the road.
Well, what I can tell you is, is the contract you have in front of you does not accommodate that, except for the standpoint of the ability to get out of the contract by no later than December 15th at 5:00. So, what I would recommend is, is that I will work with the city staff and try to get that Phase One loose, and get it done, and get it to everybody's satisfaction. And if we can't do that, we may have to bring it back to the council at a special call meeting.
And you did mention, one of the criteria when you do a Phase One is determine what the uses have been in the past. And one can never tell what uses have been, particularly in remote areas of the countryside.
Well, now, I think that was true with Providence Park as well, is that it was a small area of property that was implicated. I do remember that.
Thank you.
As we just go on, I just want to reiterate the fact that, number one, I don't believe at all that the city has stepped in to try to, you know, that there was an opportunity for another purchaser to buy and run the club, and that the city has blocked that or whatever. Again, I think it was an opportunity the Green Space Committee saw. So, you know, it was brought up, and rightfully so, our city manager said, as part of property values, it's hard to say anybody's guess on what would happen. I think the safe bet to say, though, is whether it's green space and a greenway or an existing golf course, the values are going to be much higher than if it's a defunct club and it's not maintained and limbo. So, I would certainly say, from my perspective, I would, and I believe the rest of the city council and the staff, this was only, we're looking at this as a positive thing for not only our citizens and our community, but also the property owners that are affected. We want them to be, you know, protected, too, and maintain something that would actually help their values. But, we'll keep on going. Bert, you have anything?
I've just got a quick comment. I think that this is a great opportunity for our city pending the outcome of our due diligence period. If everything on its face comes out, I think it's a good opportunity. I think there is going to be change on that property, whether it's the city or something else. And this gives the folks that are most directly impacted, if the city gets a large voice in the outcome of what that's going to be. So, I'm fully supportive of it pending our due diligence period, and hope that my colleagues up here feel that as well, which I think they do.
Okay. Rick?
I guess, in looking through this, and when we've talked earlier, when we actually considered putting an offer out there, I think it does present a very positive opportunity. What I heard as far as concerns tonight would be the timing of the contract and the due diligence, because if we look at it, we have 11 days total, nine business days to conduct all our due diligence. And second, as far as, part of that would also be community input. If community want to give additional input, how would we facilitate that within that period of time? Steve, I guess a question I have for you is, what is driving the December 15th date in the contract? Is that flexible? Is there any way to adjust that?
The seller's driving the date.
Okay. So, they basically said, you want to buy it, it's going to be by this date, and we'll give you due diligence up to that point in time?
That's correct.
Okay.
And just to clarify, you know, it's not a closing date, but that's
Right.
December 15th the date where your money
Money goes.
Would go hard.
Earnest money.
Now, if you went past that, the money was hard, but we found something that really totally made a huge impact, we could go back and look, you know. We wouldn't have to go forward with it. Obviously, we don't want to put any money at risk.
Right. And I guess, one of the other questions, then, is for the valuation. I know we're going to, you've ordered an appraisal. I would assume, valuation of property really depends on what the potential use of that property is. So, I guess what I would ask you and staff is, during these nine business days that we have, do we feel we can actually take a look at what they had represented as these are the number of homes that could be built? Because that's part of what drives purchase prices. What is the value of the land? What can it be used for? Including, you know, setbacks. I know, Carter, that would come into you as far as where streets could be laid, what the setback is for property lines, all those type of things. Do you think we can do that within those nine days?
Oh, we did it based on the 51 homes. I don't recall what the, off the top of my head, I don't recall the number off the top of my head. I don't want to give you a bad one, but it was based on a whole host of suppositions. So, it's, we can do our best based on it, but it's only telling you what the property value would be to a developer.
Right.
If you take away the 51 homes, and let's say you don't develop Track One, and you leave that facility, and you sell that to someone who wants to run that facility, and you just sell off the other tracks with a different entry point, it's worth something else.
Right.
So, it is a bit of a moving target for us, but I can try.
Yeah. I guess, along that line, I think the biggest value probably is, and the biggest impact to the homeowners that live there, or, and to the city, because we hear all the time, what can you do to stop development? How come we're letting more homes be built? We'd love to see that stay a golf course and somebody own and run it, but the reality is, it's, I think it's moving towards receivership, and that's the reason why we have an opportunity to look at it. The number of homes that could be built on there, and I know we're not going to do soils to see what perks and everything else, but just to get a good idea of what could be built with access to it. I think that would help us understand, is this really, if, you know, combine the appraisal and what you guys look at, say, within Milton, Milton's rules for streets, setbacks, all those other things, what could really be developed in that parcel that they're showing? I think that helps us understand, what is the valuation, really? What are we, if we were competing with someone else, what would we be competing against? I don't think any of the homeowners that live in Wood Valley would want to see homes built on there. I'm just guessing, but I don't think they'd want to see an additional 50 homes built there. But from a purchase price, and I think that's the thing that Bill had talked about, the doing, looking at the property lines, doing the surveys. I think those things are very important for us to really find, do we think that it is worth the $5 million that we're putting out there? I think there's intrinsic value with some, like you had mentioned, with some of the things that are there, with the cart pass and whatever that could be used. We may not have to build them, maybe we will rebuild them with input from the neighbors if we purchase it. But the question is, how much intrinsic value over what the actual value of that property would be to somebody else?
It's going to be difficult, however. You know, what's the value of us taking control of 1.6 miles of Chicken Creek and to all those that live downstream from our property now? We can do our, we can do our best to see if we can back into a number that we think it's worth to a developer, but I'm not, I don't really know how to quantify what it, what is worth us. I mean, we're, from a business standpoint, we're the, you know, we're the better buyer.
Right.
We're a sure thing here.
Yep.
And, you know, they may have been able to hold on to it for another week and make more, or they may, they may have been stuck with this property, you know, for months to be able to try to get more than us. I don't know. But, Carter, I don't know. Is this something, could we reconfigure that? I know we looked at it a little bit. It looked like some of them are more than an acre, some of them, you know, if we tried to reconfigure. I know we did some rudimentary work. We were able to see that the road could, in fact, be put in the way as, could be in the way it was laid out behind the homes on Freemanville, snaking down into the most southern piece. I think that was five, the five or, it was six. So, it could, from a reasonable standpoint, it could. But it would take a significant amount more work, and I certainly don't have the capability to be able to do that. Is that something that we have the ability to do?
Well, part of the problem will be that, to do it correctly, we would need the boundary survey in order to really get the dimensions of the property and be able to lay those lots out, or potential lots out, more accurately. And that's not something that we don't have at this point. So, if we're talking about trying to do that between the time we get the survey in hand and the 15th, if that was the date, that's a pretty tall order.
Would it be safe to say, though, in your, you know, what you guys have done by laying the 50, 51 lots out with, you know, educated engineering, whether they changed around a lot, there's probably still going to be 50-some plus or minus lots, you know, whether the boundaries change a little bit or not. And I know, from a, trying to come up with a value, and I know when you, you know, in your negotiations and meetings, you know, you look at, so many lots are going to be X number of dollars, you know, take the clubhouse and that, you know. I know there was some events of facilities that were looking at purchasing that, to have a private events venue there, that type of stuff. So, I think if you had the numbers up, you'd probably come up pretty close, wouldn't you? Fairly accurate, when it's all said and done.
Based on our amateur, none of us are developers, based on what we've been able to do, we think we, we believe at 36.5, not including the improvements, which are significant, 36.5 an acre is, you can't find it in AG1 in Milton.
Well, I think to the point, you take the, you know, and the city would have the opportunity to peel off, and for Councilmember Thurmond, you know, we may have to use a different pot of money, but to peel off the, you know, we've got options to sell the amenities there. You know, that brings, that would probably bring it down to the 20s, $1,000 an acre, which would be very good value for park space. You know, as far as public comment on the amenities, you know, they certainly could be kept. They could be, you could find a program partner that would, you know, continue running a tennis program or swim if the community wanted, and the city, if it made sense. So, you know, there's several options with that, too.
And I guess, just to close out, from a due diligence standpoint, we're going to see these numbers as soon as you get them. That's going to give us the opportunity to say, there is a wide disparity between, or there's a disparity, and we don't think it's worth that. We think we're overpaying. So, we've heard some figures that were thrown around. I don't know where those figures came from, but different figures that people were using as far as what they thought it was purchased, or what was in there, what the value was. But we'd have a chance to, we as a council would have a chance to look at that and say, hold it, we really think we need to adjust this. When we come back in public session, would that be something we would do in a, we're going to have, what, one more meeting is scheduled? That would be next Monday. But that meeting is going to be, is that a planning session?
This, if we were going to go over this in a meeting setting, and Ken and I were just discussing it when you were asking a question, you know, we'd probably have to do a special call meeting to go over those numbers. Obviously, as Obviously, as, as Ken promised, as he gets them, we'll have them, include, we will have them, so you'll have them as well. And if it required a meeting, that would obviously be your determination to see what comes back.
Okay, so, up until the, the 15th, with the close of the 15th, we have an opportunity to pull out if we have anything that says, or to go back and do a counter offer if we think we, we need to change any of the terms?
Yeah, that's right. So, the paragraph four of the agreement, it's on page two, but the middle of the paragraph says that during the due diligence period, the buyer may terminate this agreement with or without cause.
Okay.
And in the event of such termination, buyer shall receive a full refund of the earnest money.
Okay.
So, that is done on purpose, that's to give the council maximum flexibility, should you find something in the due diligence that you don't like. I just received notice that the appraisal should be to us by the end of the day, close of business on Monday, which is the 11th. My hope is that all of these due diligence components will begin to trickle in all about the same time, and that would be the phase one, the appraisal, the survey, and the title commitment or the title binder. And again, I will get those to senior city staff just as soon as I get them, and he will distribute them as he thinks is appropriate, but obviously, I know what my instructions are.
And to the day, do we know who actually holds title on this?
Well, if you're asking me right now, what the title opinion is going to show, I don't know what the title opinion is going to show. The, the name of the company that we believe holds title is Milton Interests LLC, and I suspect that is based upon a very recent conveyance from Triumph to Milton Interests to put it into a Georgia holding company.
Okay. Well, we know that Fulton County records things very quickly when it comes to title insurance. Anyway, okay, thank you, thank you for your answer.
And I might just add, just for the public, you know, when, when your city buys something, it's the same process that an individual would, basically, you put, we put something on a contract, and let's say we had a contract for a piece of property for $200,000, it seemed like a good value. When the appraisal comes back and other information, if it came back at half of that, we certainly, you know, wouldn't, just like you would yourself, you wouldn't go, probably wouldn't go through, you'd go back and renegotiate. Now, you know, if an appraisal, if you put something on a contract for $200,000, it came back at $180,000 on the value, we'd have to really sit there and think and make sure if we're going to pay 200, that there's a value there that is not shown on the appraisal. So, to, to that point, to Rick's point, and everybody else, for due diligence, if this information came back and there was a gross, you know, there was a difference there, that we would certainly take a second look at it. But I, I would agree, the, the timing, the timings, you know, again, I'd rather have much more time. We're kind of at the mercy of the contract if, you know, to Steve's point, we could, could not, not put this under contract based on this, we could ask for more time, but we don't know whether, you know, it's just a gamble on that part, so, that's up to the Anybody else have anything?
I would just say, Mr. Mayor, if the council is going to make a motion to approve the agreement, don't want to forecast that, but if that's where you're going, I would respectfully request, y'all are typically prone to read from the, the agenda header, I would just mention that the contract is in the name of Milton Interests LLC now. Milton Interests LLC, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Now, I'll open up for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 17-308 with a change that the contract be between the City of Milton and Milton Interest LLC. And I believe there was also a, an additional parcel number that needed to be changed as well.
Councilmember Hewitt, there was, so that the parcel number would be, this is the third line, end of the number on the third line, 22441006000798, two fours. Thank you.
As, as the city attorney mentioned.
Okay, all right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion for approval as read into the record from Councilmember Hewitt, I have a second from Councilmember Coons. Any discussion? I'd just like to make one statement, if we worked, if we did, this purchase goes forward, I'd be totally committed, and I believe the rest of the council would too, that we would have a total public input, spend the time to make sure that it's right and protects everybody as well as possible, so. Any other questions?
I agree, I would, wouldn't do it if I didn't believe that too, so.
Yes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I pass it to you now, Ms. Sooty. Thank you, thank you for all being here. All right. We'll, we'll move, move on to council reports. Does anybody have anything they want to report on?
I have two.
Okay.
You, Mayor, maybe you want to give it in?
Yeah. It's five minutes?
Just let it settle, bear on, go ahead.
It'll work.
There's no, I'm sure you take.
It's ongoing.
No, there's still some there.
It's in your beer.
Yeah, you would have seen.
Yeah.
It's, it's, I've already seen.
Normally, if I've grown it, I'm making sure, I'm going to let it grow, and say this would be the one.
Folks, the council is still in session, if you could make your way out, it's awful.
And I, I would say also to the folks here, feel free to use the lobby out here, you don't have to leave if you want to, if you still want to talk.
If I can, your attention? had a couple of reports.
Yeah. Ready? I'll wait for Rick to back, I want Rick to get back here as well first, so, yeah.
He's speaking.
I did the math. I did the math. All right. It won't be that fast, but it's just quite slow.
All right, guys, we, Matt's got a couple, Matt's, Matt's got a couple of reports, so, go ahead, Matt.
Things real quick. The first thing, which is positive, the Milton Equestrian Committee has actually been working on a trail ride on December 26th. They have had some pretty good responses, from what I've heard. Tamra Jurges, though, and I've talked about it, she did ask if the council would be willing, whatever funds they might need to help with this, that we'd be willing to direct staff to help in perspective, or if there was a way they could break money through, you know, sponsorships or things like that, help with the legalities of that. That was a specific request that I had from Tamra, who was helping to put together the equestrian ride. And so Courtney would know more about that, I'm sure.
That's what I was actually just gonna say.
Yeah.
I know, there's no way you can hear.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to hear right now, so.
Courtney, do you have a, you have a staff report today?
You do?
And I was there last.
One, so.
We just have, we just have a question right now.
One of the questions regard, from, from Councilmember Coons is regarding the planned equestrian event for December 26th.
Okay.
Have they come to you seeking any sort of additional, any funding for that matter?
Well, we just, we discussed having prizes, they know we don't have a budget for this event or for that committee, and so Tamra has asked if they could take, are they allowed to take donations from businesses or private individuals to give as those prizes, or as incentives to, to come to the trail ride?
So, do they know how much money they need to raise?
They, they have not given me a number.
Okay, so.
She mentioned to me just a few hundred dollars, which I.
It's not much.
Right. They also probably need, need a budget for signage, for, for directionals, to tell people where to park and where to come to the trail ride, different things, so, but it would be minimal, yes.
If we're talking a couple hundred dollars, I'm sure we can, we, we can shake something loose, but if it's, you know, if it's four digits, you know, then it starts becoming a little bit.
It's certainly not four.
Right, it's a very small amount, a couple, a few hundred dollars as far as it goes, just to kind of get it kicked off.
Yeah, that won't require a budget, or anything like that, so, something that small, I, I'm sure we can, if, if, Courtney, if you wouldn't mind working with the committee, figuring out what their needs are, and then just bring those forward, and we'll, like that, I'm sure we can, we can take care of.
Awesome. Just have a question on that.
Yeah, I was just, and maybe I need to save it until Courtney comes up, it was a question about traffic control and some of those things. Is this part of your presentation, you going to talk about the?
It, it can be, or I can answer right now. We have a logistics meeting tomorrow at 2:00 to discuss all of that.
Okay, and are.
We'll make sure it's hammered out with police and public works.
We already notified the, the people on Wood Roads that they're where, that the road is shut down?
We have not, not yet, but we, I wanted, I wanted that worked out specifically as to how we were going to handle through traffic for people who live there and the holidays before we, so I can give them a thorough answer.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay.
And also, just to the point, our chairman of that committee's here, if you have any, any input, that's fine, if not, but, okay.
Thank you.
All right. The other item I was thinking too, I had talked to Mark Bittner, my appointee on the Planning Commission, and I talked to a couple of you guys about this as well today, too, and I was thinking, you know, sometimes, for the most part, we, we tend to agree, but I think there's one element that might be missing that, or a resource that we can give to them to help them with their decision-making process, and one thing I realized they don't have there, while we have access to legal help, is they do not on the Planning Commission. And I have been talking with a couple, with my appointee and a few others have asked us as well in the past, if they have a legal question that they ask to come up with a conclusion, staff isn't able to give them the legal answer at that point in time. And so, I had talked to Ken to see what, you know, what the cost would be if that was the case. I think it would create efficiencies if we did that, so, Ken, you and I had talked, you said that the Fulton County Plan Commission, you do meet with them as well?
Yeah, I mean, some, some of my clients, I mean, I'm, I'm used as much or as little as the governments that hire me want my firm to be there, so, for some governments, like Forsyth, Newton, some of the other counties I work in, I'm, it's not always me, but one of my attorneys is, is at those Planning Commission meetings, and so that's not unprecedented, it's just up to Milton, you know, we do have a presence at the BZA meetings now, but we have never, I don't, I don't believe we attend Planning Commission meetings, I don't think that we do, and so that is, of course, would be up to city leadership and the city council.
Question, I guess, to people who've been here since beginning, to that point, did we initially have legal counsel there at the Planning Commission meetings when we first formed? I thought, it seemed like.
Nobody had access to it, but, and I don't know if it was, you know, depending on the subject.
I can't remember, I mean, I've been here since 2007, and for the life of me, Mr. Mayor, I just can't recall, Councilmember.
I wouldn't check into that, though.
Okay.
I don't think it would be a bad idea, for maybe, maybe not every meeting, but as the agenda. Depending on the agenda, it'd be good.
They meet once a month, cost could be 50, $500 a year, if that was the actual cost, 450 a meeting is what we talked about.
Need to go up, really?
Yeah, there you go, well, Stephen, that was Steve's number that he mentioned, so he gave you that.
I rounded up, I rounded up.
Exactly.
If you can send to those meetings, and.
Yeah, this is better rate.
But I do think it would create some efficiencies as well, and so as people are asking those questions, especially from a volunteer perspective, they're a very important volunteer position. I think that they, if they ask those questions and have an answer readily available, or someone who could answer that, it would, one, create more confidence in the questions that they ask, and two, the process as well, and their recommendation to us, and that could actually make some things that come before us, you know, a pretty good debate, so.
What I have seen, Councilmember Lust, or, excuse me, Councilmember Coons, is that it does help the commission from time to time in the various governments, but I'll also tell you what it helps with, sometimes it helps with the citizens to, to hear sometimes opinions from the attorneys, and I'm not saying anything magical about what we say, but sometimes it can let people know there is a legal basis for action that lends legitimacy to it, so I'll stop at that.
Right. So, that was, that was the reason why I decided to make that a recommendation, so as a council, I don't know if we want to direct staff to look into that further, or to proceed with that, or, or how we want to look at that, but that was an idea I think that could be, Steve, you and I talked, you can implement this pretty quickly if you wanted to.
All I need is the direction, I mean, I'm sure that, that Robin wouldn't be upset about having legal help there, and I know we don't, rarely do we have 12 meetings a year.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't, other than, other than the cost, I don't see a downside.
Okay.
Sure. You know, speaking of the cost, a way to, usually there's a return for that, you know, maybe there's some efficiency, maybe there's some help making decisions that, you know, that may not be an actual true decision.
Understood.
I mean, I'd be certainly open to looking into it.
I mean, you may, to that point, you may have, to your point, you may be already paying some of those indirect costs as a result of the meeting when, when Robin now reaches out following the meeting, so it's possible that you're hitting those anyway.
I don't know what the formal process we would need to do, as far as, you know, if you need to bring something back to us and get formal direction on that, if the council wants to do that, or.
If we have, what do we need to do if we, if, for them to further consider it, or is this enough and we just do it?
Listen, this is, this is the easiest.
You need to recuse yourself.
You have an interest in this.
I wasn't going to say anything.
And what's your suggestion?
No, I'm just kidding, listen, I mean, you know, if, if it, if it can add to the decision-making for the plan, listen, at the end of the day, that's what it's about, right? It's about making those meetings better, it's about giving confidence in decision-making. My recommendation would be, and again, self-interest noted, my interest would be to try it, and if it works, great, and if it doesn't work, and the Planning Commission gets a little out of it, then shut it down, because that's the beauty of, of you, you tell me what to do, I'll be there, you tell me to stop, I'll stop.
So, can I, is it formal where I can make a motion and say that we do this?
We're just, we're just kind of in reports, so really not appropriate for a motion, but I think if the consensus of the council is to direct the city manager to have me come, we'll come.
Okay.
And then I'll stop when he tells me to stop.
Council, what's council thoughts on that?
Favor of starting.
I don't see anybody shaking no.
I'd recommend I do, you can talk on that.
When you have to sit quiet for two hours, it's sort of, you just keep going.
I, I would say, it possibly, it probably could, you know, be of benefit for the city more efficiently, so, just want to watch it, you know, and make sure it's a benefit.
And along, I guess I, I think we, we all supported that, I, I think it will help them, maybe, many times we've had issues, I shouldn't say many times, we've had issues where people say, well, the Planning Commission said this, and then council went against it, but we may have had to vote because we looked at legal ramifications that they didn't have the benefit of doing, and then it made it look like council is always, you know, there's this disparity, so I think it would help, and the other, other thing I'd add to what Matt said is if we could ensure that we have legal input when we do training of any new appointees, I just think it's important that they, that whoever comes on to a, a committee... new appointees, I just think it's important that they, that whoever comes onto a committee, when we appoint them, that they get training right away, and they get complete training, so that they know, especially in the, in a couple of our boards where it's very important, because they are making decisions that affect kind of the direction of the city.
We're looking at redoing the entire process.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Okay, you may ask Bill. I'd go along with Rick, what he said about training, we've been talking about that for years, and with the turnover that we have on these different boards and committees and commissions there, I think you end up with some gaps, but as far as having legal counsel during the Planning Commission, I'd recommend that we, let's try it for a year, rather than to have some subjective determination, well, this week we're not gonna go because this item's not contentious, I don't think we can ever determine really what's contentious.
I will say, only that there is a certain rapport that you build with your council, and it's harder for me to interrupt or, you know, voice a concern over council members or board members I don't know, than if you know me, and I know you, and we can then engage and look, because there's a mutual trust, hopefully, so I only say that to say, if we're gonna do it, that does make a little bit of sense, again, subject to the fact that you all can still say, thank you, Ken, we've had enough of your, you know, wonderful legal advice, at any time, but yeah, I do agree that if they see a common face there over multiple meetings, they'll begin to trust that common face more than it's once every three months.
Right.
Any other?
Tonight's been a really positive meeting, so I hate to bring this up, but during general public comment, a statement was made that was factually inaccurate, and that statement was that the mayor and council were not aware of the district changes until it was too late, and that statement is absolutely false. That was actually, when I first proposed this to Pro Tem Jones, you know, months before, then when we talked about it again, and it was time for it to actually be put on the agenda, I went to the then-city manager and the mayor, and it was discussed with both of them, the best way to handle it, and it was decided at that time by the three of us, that because all district changes had always been made by the legislature, that this should also be made by the legislature, because I was already representing them. There's been a lot of talk about it was being done because I had purchased a lot, that was the eighteenth lot I had purchased, my husband and I had purchased in Milton. So it wasn't, actually it was the nineteenth lot, because we were living in Milton, so we had purchased eighteen other lots that we had sold, seventeen other lots that we had sold. So when the information came forward and comment was made, which I can't believe it's still being made now, that the mayor and city council was not aware of it, that is absolutely a false statement, and I just hope going forward, the city can begin to heal, and these false statements will stop.
Okay. All right, do you think staff?
We do. I just, I have four reports, do you have it in you?
Hmm?
I have four reports tonight, I, it's up to you, do you have, do you have it in you?
As long as Carter's not one of them.
Carter's one of them.
He's first. It's first.
I'd be lying if we probably, all of us here didn't want to leave, but out of respect to the folks that have stayed here through three hours, I'd like to give them a minute or two to speak.
Well, I'm disappointed that the room cleared out, but I'm banking on a big online presence for my report here tonight, so. I'll just give you a quick update on some active projects that we've got going here. Our Heritage Walk project that's going on, they're continuing to work on the roundabout here at Crab Apple Circle and Crab Apple Road. It's not Circle, it's Crab Apple Walk, Crab Apple Chase. Hope to have that open by Thanksgiving, looks like it'll be by Christmas this time. At this particular point, they're not gonna open the Heritage Walk leg when they do get that open, they're concerned about the influx of traffic coming down here to the stop sign where Heritage Walk meets 372, so they're gonna just have a three-legged roundabout temporarily, until they get the other roundabout up and running, so once they complete this one, they'll move over to the 372 roundabout and work on that, hopefully to have that open around the March timeframe. Last phase of that is going to be the intersection, the main intersection, signalized intersection, to add turn lanes at that location on three of the legs, and overall project completion right now is currently scheduled for the end of June. So hopefully, a fast-moving project towards the rest of this year, beginning of next year with the amount of work they've got to do, so I hope to see a lot of that going on. Mayfield Road sidewalk project, so the sidewalks from the main intersection down to the library is scheduled to begin next week, probably end of this week, that will be a detoured on Mayfield, that will have westbound traffic only on Mayfield for about two months, to give them some room to work in that narrow corridor there, but that is scheduled to be done in March of next year too, so that one's moving forward. Same contractor that's doing the rest of the sidewalks on Mayfield for Alpharetta. Alpharetta is still considering whether or not to move forward with the portions of the sidewalk on Mayfield from Charlotte down, all the way down to Freemanville. Exceller, who is our contractor, was not the low bid on their portion, so it was a split contract, our portion was a federally bid contract, so we had to break that up a little bit, so they're still considering whether or not they're going to accept the bid from that contractor, move forward with those portions of the sidewalk from Charlotte down to Freemanville. Providence at Freemanville, the roundabout that we've got going currently, and right away acquisition, we're about halfway through that, some of the largest parcels yet to be negotiated, but we have acquired four parcels so far on that, we're finishing up plans, hope to have final plans completed in January and out to bid in January, and so that one is moving forward. Our T-Sploost projects, the county is currently looking at the revenue projections that were done originally for that, they're going back to Georgia State, I believe, is who did that, to look at those revenue projections, as we've talked about in the past, we're running about eighty-five percent of what was projected, so they're trying to determine whether or not that's a realistic amount that should be coming in, whether or not there's revenue that's not being paid at this point, so they're gonna use their administrative funds that they get to cover the cost of those, and we'll look forward to seeing what the results of those are. The projects that we've got going on, our first batch of projects was the Crab Apple Northeast Connector, we had our public meeting, I think I mentioned last month, on that, our concept meeting, so we're moving forward with final design plans on that. Hopewell at the Bethany's, we're looking at some additional modeling on that. Numbers have changed since the last time we did that concept plan a couple of years ago, the traffic numbers have changed, so we're doing some additional modeling on that, and hope to bring something forward the first quarter of next year. Our second batch is currently out, batch two includes the intersection at, of Hopewell and the Thompsons, and Hopewell at Hamby, so we're working on concept plans for that in the first quarter of next year also, we're in the final process of selecting a contractor to provide those services for us. Also, Green at State Route 140, another one of our T-Sploost projects, we're working through some signal warrant analysis with GDOT, so hopefully we'll be able to get something moving on that in the first quarter of next year, as well as Morris and Webb. So widening of Morris in relationship to the interchange project was one of our T-Sploost projects, but it was at the end of that T-Sploost cycle. As they get the signal up and running at McFarland and Bethany Bend, we're looking at an option to remove the all-way stop at Morris and Webb with the installation of a roundabout. At this point, we believe we can do it within the existing footprint almost of the existing intersection, so it should be a relatively quick project, we're looking at costs right now, and hope to do something with a design build on that, so that we can improve the capacity of that intersection as that signal gets up and running. Yeah, and that's all I had. Short and sweet.
I have to ask one last time, 372 in Batesville, do we have any update from the state on it?
I do not, I should have gotten an update on that, and I did not for this meeting, but I'll check with GDOT to see where they are with that.
Because it's backed up well south of the roundabout, and also backed up well east of the roundabout on a regular basis, that you can't even get into the roundabout itself.
And we just had a pretty good accident over there. It, I concur entirely.
Last discussion we had, they were looking at some costs for turn lanes, and whether or not they could do that under the safety funds that they had available to them, which I believe had a two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cap. If they couldn't do it under that, they would ask whether or not we wanted to contribute to whatever the project cost was to help accelerate that project, so I'd need to get an update on that for you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else for Carter? Thank you, Carter. Pete?
Welcome.
Evening, Mayor and Council, I was hoping Carter was gonna save me a few of his minutes, but I'd like to do is-
Can I have Sam's?
I'm sorry. What I'd like to do, since this is my last report for 2017, I'd like to do is just highlight some of the accomplishments of the department. The department has upgraded all its radios, we are now one hundred percent compatible with the Norfolk radio system, which is a TDMA system, which means that multiple users can use one frequency, so we're excited about that, because there are some changes that can occur with the new radio system once everybody is TDMA compliant, so we are there. We've hired ten new employees, we've had six FAO promotions, four captains and one battalion chief. We had our in-house paramedic program kicked off this year, and we expect a completion of six new paramedics by February. We added a search and recovery dog, we've ordered our mobile fire training facility, which is due to be delivered early January. We're second in the state in our MDA collections, we collected almost eighty thousand dollars this year. Our CERT program started in early November, and we expect a completion of that program in January, and have our first Milton CERT team. And our community paramedicine program officially kicked off on December 1st, we did three visits today, the folks that we visited were very excited to be part of the program and share their information with us, and then we do follow-up visits with them, we have three more visits scheduled this week. And we had four field saves this year, which means that we had four people that were clinically dead, and we were able to revive them and transport them to the hospital, and all four of those walked out of the hospital. And our call volume over the last twelve months has increased seven percent, and our pancake breakfast is on Saturday, so I hope you all come with and join us. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Was it, the video that I've been seeing circulating around, was that for the search and rescue dog?
I'm not familiar with that.
There's a video of doing push-ups, and the dog that kind of goes right along and goes forward, have you guys seen that?
Uh-uh.
Yeah.
We'll have to look at that, I haven't seen that.
It gets a lot of likes, but it's people doing, doing push-ups, and then the search and rescue dog kind of goes forward with them in motion, and goes down, and then comes back up, and-
That's interesting.
I just wondered if that was something you planned, so.
No, sir, I have no idea what that's about, but our search and recovery dog was called out for a person at Lake Lanier, a missing person, and the dog found that person, unfortunately that person did not survive, it was in the water, but she was the one who found the victim, so it was unfortunate ending, but a great accomplishment.
Speaking of dogs, can I bring my dogs for their annual picture with Santa Claus if I come really early Saturday morning?
Sure, we'll be there at six.
What Santa, what time will Santa be there?
But bring your coat, because it's supposed to be cold, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The chief?
No.
Okay.
Good evening. Earlier this evening, you gave out forty tenure pens, forty employees who have been around since 2007, that's pretty impressive retention. Let you know what's going on in HR, we're in the middle of our holiday challenge, which we're doing maintain, don't gain, which the concept is, if you gain less than two pounds between Thanksgiving and New Year's, you're eligible for a drawing. We had fifty-five employees show up, or participate in it, but Complicate Matters, we had Baconfest this past Friday, which was also very well-intended, so we're trying to sabotage maintain, don't gain on the back end.
Play Survivor.
And then you got the pancake breakfast this Saturday.
I'm gonna have to call Chief Edgar for anybody to be resuscitated or anything. Most importantly, and it's kind of what Chief Edgar did, I wanted to recap what we kind of accomplished this year, and it was brought forward, this, right before Thanksgiving, the city was recognized by Georgia Local Government Personnel Association, for NRHR Department, as Agency of the Year. It's the second time in four years we've won this award. But this past year, in order to achieve it, we put in paid maternity leave for our employees, we transitioned from a vacation and sick leave policy that was being problematic with some scheduling issues, to a PTO policy that seems to be working well. We made changes at our find benefit plan, we also implemented a pay plan, or a pay study, and as of today, we had one vacancy in the police department, and one vacancy in the fire department, and I know both of them are interviewing for new folks, so that level of staffing problems of only one employee in each department is pretty much unheard of these, this day and age in recruiting policemen and firemen.
Could I just add to that, Sam, the city wasn't recognized, you were recognized, so very much appreciated.
And we also switched from Blue Cross to Cigna and saved our renewal from twenty-five percent down to nine percent, so. Any questions I can answer for y'all?
Any questions for Sam?
Good job.
Questions on that?
Thank you.
All right, sorry Courtney, let's see, Carter took chief's time, chief took Carter, Sam's?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Since we last spoke, in September, we had our Carver and Crab Apple, we launched our new event, Rock for Rescues, which has got a very positive response, we launched that oblong dog, and that was, that launch was to introduce the new event, and to introduce sponsors, the charities that are taking part, and the organizers and the musicians, along with people from the city, so getting everybody involved, and it's gotten a big response, but you're gonna see a lot of fundraising initiatives and attention-getting things with the different charities from now until April, which is when the actual event is. In November, we had our first Veterans Breakfast, which was very successful, we had General A.J. Teta, who was a great speaker, we had a good turnout for it, we also had a good turnout for what followed that immediately, which was our Literature Festival, where we also learned about how loud people in the lobby, how that sound carries into this room, which we saw tonight. So we'll make some adjustments, but it really, it was well-attended, and we got some great comments back from it. In December, of course, we had our Christmas in Crab Apple and tree lighting, I was, I was very proud of how that turned out, the tree, our Santa is always is great, our, the combination and partnership we have with Crab Apple Community Association is fantastic on that event, it really is, it's fifty-fifty with getting the schools involved, Milton High School, Cambridge came this year, Birmingham Falls, Crab Apple Crossing, all great choirs, and the kids and the parents show up, it really is a perfect example of a community event. Pancake breakfast is Saturday, Santa will be there at eight, and happy to take pictures with your beautiful dogs. Our first community trail ride, our holiday trail ride, at December 26th, you'll hear more about that. And then in January and February, what I'd like to work on is our Citizens Government Academy, that should start January 16th, we hope to have fifteen people signed up for that, to learn more about, over seven weeks, learn more about every, every department in the city, as well as working on, I'm working with Kathy Field on our Milton Museum, we want to make the second floor of City Hall, that, that space up there to feature the history of Milton, so, thank y'all very much.
Anybody questions, Bill? Oh, I just, and you know what, I wanted to thank you, Courtney, because all these events have just continued to get better and better every year, and I, certainly, we all see all the hard work you put in, and-
Fantastic, thank you.
-extra time to make them happen, so thank you.
Definitely, thank you very much.
All right. Bill?
Thanks, good night. Not me.
I met with Representative from Canaan Industries today, they're the perpetrators of the wave-finding and historic marker signage throughout the city, we went out and pinpointed the locations of twenty of the twenty-nine historic markers that are gonna be installed, they're gonna go into fabrication here in a few weeks, and hopefully, after the first of the year, we're gonna start installing those, so.
Nice. Okay, anybody else have anything? Now we'll conclude the meeting, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, I have a motion to second to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I'll find that email regarding-